Thanks for tuning in. If you're watching on YouTube, be sure to hit the subscribe button to stay up to date on all our latest video content. If you're watching on local gov TV, be sure to visit their website to see all of the content made for you by your local governments. Alamance County is pleased to present the Alamance County Commissioners' Meeting.
This is a work session, not one of our regular county commissioner meetings. We have invited guests, specifically ABSS and ACC, and the superintendent and the chairman of each of those. But other than that, we will not have guest speakers at this work session. We have an open house, actually, a public hearing scheduled for Monday, 6:30 PM. It'll be in the historic courthouse up the street. It will not be in this room. And at that one, any and everybody will be welcome to speak at that meeting, at the budget open house. Okay. Any questions from anybody on that issue? We have two other work sessions. They are scheduled for June 10th and June 12th. And we will use those if needed. If not, we have the luxury of canceling those if we feel we do not need them. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I? I'm sorry.
On the agenda, we do not have... We're going to have a prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance anyway, even though it's not on our agenda. Mr. Turner?
And while you were talking about other budget work sessions, Mr. Chairman, June 10th, I have a conflict at 9:30 AM. I have motions up the street that I cannot miss.
You mean just because they're spirit court judges?
Just to let you know, I mean, we can address that.
Look at your calendars and see if we can make it.
We've got an audience here this morning.
Correct.
June 10th.
Look at your calendars and see what June 10th, later in the day, we're going to do.
I've got a doctor's report.
Anytime.
Yeah, I'm good too.
What time could you be free, Commissioner Turner?
The church says so.
This morning, I mean, it could go into the afternoon.
At 2:00?
They're the 1:00. I don't know, 30. It's a number of motions out. I mean, 2:00 is reasonable. I won't be able to be late.
All right. I'm looking at staff at this point because I'm going to go like at 4:00 or something, but that hinges upon your time, not so much ours.
Staff will make ourselves available when it's convenient for the board.
How about 3:00?
I'm good with any time that afternoon.
That works.
3:00 every morning?
Yep.
3:00 on June 10th.
So the June 10th meeting will be at 3:00 PM as opposed to 9:30 AM. Mr. Turner, do you have a quick implication for us?
Sure. We bow our heads with the Heavenly Father, Lord. We thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for having Brother Bill back with us and hope that he continues to improve and that he continues to be able to fulfill his duties to the county. But also, please, Lord, make him remember to monitor his own health, not to push himself. And that the most important thing is that he is healthy and that his family is awesome. Lord, we thank you for this day and your new prayer. Would you stand with the pledge?
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all done a great job, but you kept it short. Okay. Ms. Moore.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is your first budget work session. I just wanted to orient you to how our time is structured. Both Dr. Ingle and Dr. Harrison are going to summarize their requests to the board in about 15 minutes. We have time after each one of those for Q and A with the board. And then we'll wrap up with any questions that the Commissioners have for county staff. As you have been giving us questions all along about the budget, we've taken those down in writing. And so Rebecca Crawford, our budget director, will go over some of those at the end. Just a running tally of questions that you may have that we can try to address for you. And please feel free to add to that list if there are any other requests for information along the way. We will work on getting a response back to you. So I think we're ready to proceed, and we were going to start with Alamance Community College's request this morning.
And let me welcome both ACC and ABSS. We're not going to time you, but we're going to have a little hook that would... No, I can't. There was no timing, obviously. Yes, sir. We all know who you are, but if you would, would you get to the podium and just announce who you are?
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate it. Good morning. Good to see everybody today. I'm Ken Ingle. I am the president of Alamance Community College, a whopping four months into the job, and excited to spend a few minutes with you today talking about our budget and debate things happening at the college. It's wonderful to see you back and doing well. Wishing you continued health and success. I know it's been a challenging time. So excited to share with you what's happening at the college and, again, our budget requests today. I wanted to start out giving you a little bit of context, and I'm confident that my time will not require a hook at the end of it. So I think this will be pretty brief and hopefully pretty easy to step through. But I think it's good to start out with some context of the things happening at the college and how we're working to serve the community. I thank you so much. I know I'm losing my hair, but that's...
No.
Thank you. You know, our job every single day is to serve the community to the greatest effect possible, and we do that by really connecting the community to the workforce through workforce education, through our academic programs, whether it be our transfer programs to our wonderful university partners, whether it be through our two-year programs like our nursing program, our HVAC program, and many other great programs we have at the college, or short-term workforce training, which is a huge part of what we do and a significant growth area for the college. And that's meeting the immediate demands of the workforce and both existing and emerging workforce that we have. It's also important, the partnerships that we have with our wonderful friends at the school system and others here in the community to just make sure that we're doing that work every day of connecting the community to the workforce to really promote economic development within our area. And so with that, I'd just kind of like to level set where we are today. So when we look over the past year, we served over 12,000 students at the college between all of our programs that we offer, and that's going up. Our enrollment for this summer is up over 15% from last summer, and we're already tracking almost 6% up this fall. So we're seeing incredible growth in a lot of ways that mirrors the growth we're seeing within the community as a whole. As we see our community grow and economic development happen within the community, we're seeing an increasing need for a trained workforce, and that's what we're here to do. So we're seeing students come to the college, and we're working hard to connect with businesses and other organizations to help meet that need. Currently, we have more than 50 programs of study. In fact, just in the past couple of weeks, we submitted to the State Board two new programs of study around artificial intelligence and data analytics in response to significant needs that we see within those spaces across multiple industries that are both in the area and within the larger region. As I mentioned, our enrollment is up more than 14%, actually over 15% for the summer. And currently, we're closing in on 2,000 dual-enrolled high school students that are not only taking high school classes and working to finish their high school diploma, but are taking college classes at the same time. And that is something we are incredibly excited about. It is one of our strongest partnerships with the school system and is really a wonderful opportunity that is either low or no cost, depending on specific courses, for those students. My son actually takes advantage of that very program as well. It's a great program. And when we talk about university transfer, we're over 20 university transfer agreements right now, and we're looking at expanding that even further. This past Friday, I had a meeting with a potential university partner, looking at options to expand not only access to four-year education through the community college, but affordable access to four-year education. So that was a big part of our discussion. And as I mentioned, the workforce development area of the college, which is those short-term training programs, is one of our... It is our biggest growth area at the college. It's up over 20% over the past year. So we are seeing incredibly exciting things happen at the college. We're looking at new opportunities, like I mentioned, within the AI and analytics space, as well as health program expansion and other short-term workforce needs that we see. Our small business center, we're looking at how we can expand the footprint of that. We're working closely with the Chamber of Commerce on that project. So really excited about the things happening at the college and how we're working every day to serve the wonderful people of Alamance County. I think it is good as we talk about our budget to give you context for where the county support really helps support what we're doing. And that is primarily seen through the physical plant that we have of our campuses and our facilities, whether it be at our main campus or at the Dillingham Center and other things related to that. So we've had a couple of new buildings come on online over the past couple of years, the Student Services Center and the Biotechnology Center of Excellence. If you have not had the opportunity to see those, you are invited anytime to come on campus, and I am happy to give you a tour and show you around and show you those exciting buildings and the things we're doing there. The Covington Education Center, we're getting ready to expand a classroom facility out there that has been funded by the Golden Leaf Foundation, which will be a barn that is also a classroom space. It's really innovative, really, really neat place. So again, would love to have you at any of these spaces. Our Public Safety Training Center, as you know, is under construction right now. In fact, this next week, I'll be out there on site, looking at how things are progressing. The pad is down from the last update that I received, and we're excited to see what happens there. Incredibly supportive for the support of the community for that project and certainly the legislature and the federal government as well. And as I mentioned, the Covington Education Center, we continue to expand in that space. So really excited about the work that we're doing there. But we're not just looking at new expansion opportunities. We're also working every day. And one of the biggest jobs that Andrea Rollins, our CFO, has, who I think many of you know very well, who is retiring from us here soon, but we're thankful for all of the tremendous work that she has done and continues to do. We're also looking at where we can be as efficient with our funds as possible at the college and make sure that we're being very intentional and good stewards of the funds that we receive, both certainly from the county as well as from the state and any other sources. We have a number of different funding sources that support our work. So these are a few examples of things that we've done to really look at the college operations, really look at how we can make sure that we're being as effective and efficient with those funds as possible. So going into the budget request, and we try to keep it very simple and straightforward. I like simple and easy to read and straightforward. Heidi and her team have been wonderful to work with, as they always are, and incredibly supportive of the work that we're doing, and we're very appreciative for their partnership in this. This past year, I've broken this down into two primary categories, current expenses, which is our operational expenses that are from county funds, and capital repairs and maintenance are capital expenses. I'll start with capital because it's the easy one. We are not asking for any additional funds within our capital expenses at this time. Our building projects and capital projects are progressing as intended within the budgets that have been allotted and identified for those projects. We feel really good about that. We're very appreciative of the support. We're in a good place with that right now. Our operating expenses, this past year, you all provided $4 million of funding, a little over $4 million of funding for operational expenses. The request that we submitted this year was for $5.7 million. And within that request, we took into account a number of different factors. We took into account the increased expenses that we see coming from utilities and insurance. We took into account certainly the new buildings that have come online, the areas that we're working to support the college. And the proposed budget that came back this past week was at $4.87 million to help support the work that we're doing. We are certainly supportive of the $4.87 million to support our work at the college. That is a significant step to help us support what we're doing to serve the community overall, and we're very appreciative for that number, as well as the other elements of the budget that have been recommended by the county to you all for voting. So while this is a little bit of a difference from what we fully requested, I would be remiss if I didn't say this is a significant step towards helping support what we're doing and taking into account the increased costs and expenses that we've seen around two examples, again, being utilities and insurance, those areas that really can support us. We feel good that this will get us much closer to being able to support our overall operational costs and expenses. It's certainly, while we would love to see it fully go to the $5.7 million, I'm completely supportive of that. If you decide that that's where those dollars need to be prioritized, we understand that you all have a lot of requests coming your way and a lot of things that have to be prioritized, and so we feel this will be a significant step in helping us support the college and helping with the work that we're doing every single day. So this is the layout of what we've requested, what the team at the county has recommended to you all, and certainly what we received last year for context. So again, we're very thankful for this and certainly excited for this step for us if you all choose either number on the right-hand side to go with, either the $4.87 or the $5.72. So with that, like I said, I tried to keep it simple and straightforward as much as possible. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you have, and you will forgive me if I may look towards Andrea as she is the in-the-very-details expert and may be able to jump in and answer any questions that you have as well.
I would point out to the board and the expanded packet that we got, this found note for your divisions, 75 and 76, for ACC. Ms. Thompson? Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, just for clarification purposes, when you're talking about the dual enrollment program, how does that pay out? I know the state gives so much per student in public education. How does that work?
Sure. So we're funded on what's called an FTE model, Full-Time Equivalency Model, which is a little bit different than the ADMR, that the state funds the K-12 system. And forgive me, I'm not an expert on the K-12 funding side of that equation by any means. I would defer to our friends at ABSS for that. But essentially, it's a formula that's based on the number of hours that a student takes, and the Career in College Promise is a state subsidized program to support dual enrollment for high schools as part of that FTE calculation. So it's funded largely by the state. There are other expenses that fall into that category, like books and materials. We try to keep those as low as possible, and there are different circumstances where either our foundation helps pay those, partnership with the school system helps pay for those expenses, so that as much as possible, that is a zero-cost equation for our high school students.
So it's still kind of an additional amount that goes into that as far as what the General Assembly is going to give on the hard line.
That's correct. That's correct. Mainly around the supplies, the budget supplies.
It's a deal, I'm going to say.
It really is. If you have a high school student that is a junior or a senior or you know one, CCP is a wonderful option. It is particularly in the courses that are university transfer courses. It is a great, great program to be a part of. So like I said, my 17-year-old son is part of that program as well, so it's a good one. It's a very good one.
Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Dr. Ingle. Are you able to monetize the increase in utility costs that you're facing above last year?
I will look at Andrea, and do you have that number right here close by?
So the dollar amount or the percentage? Utility bills in general were reported to us. I've got a report here from Duke Energy specifically, talking about commercial and industrial increases planned over the next three years. They have modified this number since January, and I'm not sure what the exact numbers are now, but they were in double digits over a three-year time period. So that we built that into our budget modeling. What we're seeing for ACC is in addition to these incremental costs and perhaps we're in silver, city of grams, that says in the 5, 9%, 5% increases. In addition to those incremental increases in utility costs, we have our new buildings coming online. So what we're seeing is that we had two new buildings come on this year. We've got our Covington Farm Center with increased usage, and then we're expecting the Public Safety Training Center in the next fiscal year as well. So we're modeling on both of those things at the same time.
When you said double digits, do you mean percentage increase or...?
Percentage increase.
Okay. So above 10?
Yes. It was right at 12 or 15.
And when you said that the state was modifying, you said that there are a modification from January, is that up or down?
I think it came down in the third year. So their long-term projection was, it seemed to be that they were communicating that there were increases planned in the next three years to then level off. But I'm not an expert in the industry, so please don't take that as a bottom line.
But basically, so a 12% to 15% increase in utility expenses that reflected, or that would come out of the additional $848,000 that the county manager's recommending?
Yeah. And this is tens of thousands, if not $100,000 for us.
So up to $200,000?
Easily.
Mr. Turner, let me interrupt just temporarily. Reese, do we have an extra mic for the folks that are not at the podium?
We don't. We can unhook this one or we don't have...
Okay. Andrea, you may want to go to the mic then, because the folks out in the audience can hear, but people out in broadcasting range cannot. Sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's my issue. So if we're... Let's use $100,000 as a round number for the increase in utility costs that will include the increases plus the new buildings, that leaves $748,000 increase in your budget. What are you planning to do with that increase?
So the types of things that are increasing, what we found is that in the last two years, the inflation that's happening in the world was costing us money, and we had to dip into our savings to cover costs. So some of the increase that we have requested is just putting us at current costs. It's not that we would be spending it on anything new. We would be spending it on doorknobs, mini blinds, window replacement, things like that that are just more expensive than they were two years ago. Some other things that we're seeing cost increase in are, we did renegotiate some major contracts, and those things had gone up as well. Same thing, their costs went up because of inflation. And although we had competitive bids and we took the lowest bids, those things are more expensive than they were in the past. So we're not anticipating additional activities. We're just hoping to keep up with inflation and make sure that we continue to maintain our buildings. They have an ongoing list of repairs, maintenance, small projects that they handle out of these funds, and those things, that's the only thing that we can control, is how much we repair things. So as long as we are maintaining funding to meet inflation, we can also maintain our buildings.
Is there anything out of the $848,000 increase that you would use to put on new programs or new services or anything, anything new?
Not really, except for the new buildings that are coming online that we would need to support the utility and operational cost for. Other than that, this past year, we actually dipped into other funding sources to cover the expenses for building operations and campus operations because we had a budget that we needed to work with and from a county perspective. So this wouldn't, this is not, none of this money would go towards expanding into new programming opportunities. We would use other funding sources to work on that and to look at opportunities for that.
What do you mean? What other sources?
So we were funded by, certainly by the county for operations of our campuses. We're funded by the state for our FTE and other operations. We have our foundation, we have other funding sources. We go for grants, things like that, where we look at opportunities when the funding that's part of our state and county allotment that covers primarily our operational costs and our current operational costs, including that state piece that's focused on the current operation from an academic programming standpoint, we look at those grants and other funding opportunities wherever we look to expand. There's not a dedicated funding source that's... Every once in a while, there will be an allotment that is provided by the state or another group that says this is for program expansion, but that's, it depends on the year, it depends on the specific budget. So we are always looking at multiple funding sources.
But is any of those other funding sources that you mentioned be used to cover the increases that are currently being allocated to the $848,000 increase from the county?
I'd like to answer that because I have a very simple way of thinking about it, and he's going to correct me. But when we... The only thing that ACC, the funding for, that comes from the state is restricted for education purposes. We can't spend it on utility bills. They don't allow it. We can't spend it for other areas that, building repairs. We can't spend it on the facilities. We have to spend it on students. And then, of course, the county funds is for the facilities, and then we have institutional funds where we're allowed to charge very small pieces of like a technology fee to our students or maybe an activity fee for our students. And what we intend to use those fees for is the technology that allows them to run. We intend to spend it on support for students who can't pay for their own books, things like that. Legally, we could spend it for utility bills because that also benefits students if we keep the lights on. But that's really not the intent of those fees. So when he talks about institutional fees, those are donations. When people donate to us and say, here, use it for your students, you can use it for students or you can use it for utility bills. If we charge fees, we can use it for their intended purpose or we can use it for our emergency needs.
And I would say, and you know, I've been in community colleges 18 years, you know, going on 19 years, and any fiscal year, there's always, when you look at fees, for example, there's always fees that are distributed towards maintenance of things and certainly towards new things at times. As a whole, that tends to be a very small component of it because to Andrea's point, even within our foundation funds, which we have an incredibly robust foundation that does great work, a lot of times those donations are restricted. Someone will donate and say, I'm donating this amount of money for a scholarship for this program, and here's the requirements around it then. So within any funding source that we have, there certainly are statutory and legal restrictions that we have within State Board Code and law, legal requirements that we have about how we use those funds. But where there is flexibility in how we use funds, we certainly try and use that as much as possible to support students. That's certainly our first hole every time, but where we need to use it in other places and we can use it in other places, we certainly do.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lashley?
No, I don't have any... Excuse me. Thank you, Chairman. I don't really have any specific questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner, for your question. Those were pretty much down the same line I was going to head down. Kudos to the manager. I think she actually saw that you folks were going to need some extra money, and she put it in her budget, a 19% increase, which I think is probably the right way to go. I understand utility bills and the new buildings coming on, but also I think the county manager took care of that as well. I think you guys are doing a great job, and thank you for being here today.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I will echo that county manager at Ms. York's office has been and continues to be great to work with and a great partner for us. So we're very appreciative for her recognition and the entire team's recognition of where our needs are. Absolutely.
Mr. Turner?
Well, I have the honor of serving on the Board of Trustees in the college and all the finance and the building and grounds committees. So I was right in the middle of the mix last year on the finance committee when Andrea was trying to figure out how we were going to meet the budget. And I have to give credit to the whole team over at ACC because they worked and did a yeoman's job of cutting and managing to the budget they had been given. And, uh, I have to give credit to the whole team over at ACC because they worked and did a yeoman's job of cutting and managing to the budget they had been given. And we were coming out right where we ought to be. But it's, I'm not going to say it's not been tough, because it has. I know it's been hard on them. And, uh, um, the utility cost, insurance cost and things of that nature and the mere fact of inflation that all of us are experiencing has had a tough impact. That's been the main driver of the expenses. Uh, so that's what they're dealing with. Two new buildings right now and a third new building coming online and a fourth new project coming online as well, so. Thank you very much, guys. Good, good, good presentation.
Just kind of wrapping up, I really don't have any major questions. Um, I really liked what the county manager proposed. Um, and I think she hit pretty much fifty percent of your requests. But still only, uh, eight hundred fifty thousand additional dollars. That's incredible. If everybody did that, the county taxpayers and everybody, we'd be in really good shape. I'd like to also comment about your accelerated program for, uh, high school kids. Two of my grandchildren completed high school with, each had two advanced degrees, coming out of graduation from high school. Uh, therefore entered, uh, both at U N C G, uh, almost as juniors going in, their, what would have otherwise been their freshman year. Tremendous cost in, uh, cost savings and tremendous advancement on where they are today. One is completing her doctorate, uh, and the other is completing his Juris Doctor. Uh, he's just completed, uh, his third year of law school at Campbell. Uh, and, uh, pretty much at the top of his class, uh, thanks to what you and B B S S did, uh, helping with his education. And just want to say thank you for doing such a wonderful job. And the expansion in this new training facility, for example, the new barn, all these things are brand new and will be the envy of Bruce all counties.
Absolutely.
I don't, I don't have any proposed change, um, manager.
John, can I just ask one? Can I just follow up with something just for reassurance? I know when, um, the vote for the training center, you guys put over three million dollars of your own money in that, so to speak, from your fund balance and it got you to a really dangerous low of a hundred thousand. Nowadays, I don't buy zaybushes for big folks like a John. But, um, after this, are you going to be safe and a healthier situation after this budget? Okay, but that's a scary thing to think you can just rely on and hold in mind.
And I appreciate that. Th- th- this is a significant step for us and certainly a very much appreciated, uh, support for what we've seen from an inflation standpoint. As far as Public Safety Training Center goes, um, we certainly have had the, the support through the bond project, uh, uh, from the county. We've also had tremendous support from the state legislature, um, and what they've provided to help fund that facility as well as the federal government actually had an appropriation within their budget. Uh, even in the midst of many budget challenges that they faced at federal level, uh, to support that facility. So we're really good shape as that construction move forward, moves forward. And, um, every, every, we, we track it very closely and we're right on track, so.
I just know lights and electricity and insurance is one thing, that, that's just life. But with a low fund balance, something will break and you just can't have that chasing you. I just want to make sure you got a healthy fund balance in case the bottom hits. In this world, it hits often, unfortunately.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, I think the funds Ms. Commissioner Thompson's talking about is your capital use or is that, is that right?
Ah, yes, the, the five hundred thirty-six thousand.
I'm talking about the one that was just over a hundred thousand.
Yeah, yes, capital reserves.
So I can't speak to the capital reserves that the county holds on our behalf, but I would defer to them to tell you what that balance is. But I do know that we do, we do hold some funds with the state as well. The state has provided some, some infrastructure funding that has made a difference. And, and we are aiming to, uh, we've been successful getting grants for capital as well. So those are two options for ACC in addition to the capital reserves.
Yeah, our capital reserve for ACC is around two hundred thousand. We've earned some interest on that. But I did want to, um, pull up this slide. You've seen this before from the manager's presentation. I don't want to lose sight of the additional funding components that the county is giving to ACC next year beyond current expense and capital. We have debt service payments, we are transferring money to their capital reserve. So your total contribution to ACC next year is around ten million, ten point one million. And there you can see the requested and recommended percentages, um, in the budget, recommended budget.
Well, I might add too, the, uh, Public Safety Training Center, when it comes online with the additional funding we got from the state and from the federal government, is going to be a state-of-the-art, top-of-the-line Public Safety Training Center, the envy of the other centers in the state. We've been, we've been receiving comment from other colleges that want to transfer or have some of their BLET training on our campus. Uh, law enforcement from all over the state want to train their officers here for upcoming training. Uh, everything from highway patrol, SBI, um, uh, federal agencies like the FBI, the, uh, what's it, uh, firearms guys?
ATF.
Just multiple agencies are looking forward to having our centrally located facility. There's so many agencies that have had to go east and west to get the training on facilities that aren't as nice as ours.
We, we had our BLET graduation this past week and.
Second largest class, wasn't it?
It was. It was second largest class ever for, for our BLET program and, uh, uh, one of, if not the largest BLET classes in the entire state. And so, and they were not just elements, county residents that were part of that class. It was some surrounding counties and other part of counties that, that are sending their, sending their potential officers to us.
And we don't even have a facility ready yet.
We're, we're racing fast.
And the last class before this one was the largest.
It was.
At fifty.
That's great.
Before any other questions? We thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. Appreciate it. Thank you.
B B S S?
Thinking my next life, I'm going to be a community college president. Mr. Laxley, we only had an opportunity to meet one time with the president of my prayers and thoughts and interview as, as well. Thank you, sir, and welcome back. I got a text earlier this morning from a good friend, and I can't understand why I've come back to work. And he, he said that, uh, I've got, we got a tea time at eight forty-five, and it's our favorite hour for us. And I text back, he said, "Teach your heart out, I'd like you to present a budget to the county commissioner." So here I am, and I appreciate the opportunity. And I appreciate Dr. Ingle mentioning the, um, the early college and the comments of, uh, of commissioners on that. Because we just had our first graduation a year beyond this early college. And eighty percent of the kids who graduated had a associate's of arts or associate of science degree. So that's a pretty incredible way to start off the, uh, the graduation season. Uh, I think our, our challenges that we're facing right now have been well documented. I brought the floor up here, so. But I want to say that since I've been here, I have had an opportunity to visit all of our schools. And what I see are just incredible children, we deserve our very best. I see a, a staff, faculty, teachers and support personnel that are just working as hard as anyone can ask anyone to have to work. I see principals that are providing the type of leadership that, um, that teachers want, principals need and parents want their, their children to have. It's all that to say that with all the noise, good things are happening out there in schools for kids. And, and that's where it's important and that's where it needs to happen. And we'll continue to keep our focus there. I've got an awful lot of information for you here and I'm going to slip through this quickly. Excuse me, I think Tori put in front of you water. Maybe in a few minutes. I hope we're not going to be here that long. Tori put in front of you kind of a talking points at each slide. And, and I'm just going to hit on these real quickly. And then I want to get to, um, what we've done to put ourselves in a position to ask what we're asking. So you have an, an understanding of that. The state has projected a decline in enrollment and I reached out to them, don't understand why. They explained it was on the first two months last year. Adjustments will be made if there's a significant growth, but that kind of starts us off a little bit behind the eight ball that we weren't anticipating. Just heard Commissioner Thompson, I've been talking about the importance of fund balance. We start at the year of a hundred and two thousand dollar fund balance, which is, is not, we have a bunch of like, we do. We actually used our fund balance the, the last two years. We used three point five fund balance in twenty-one, twenty-two. We used three point five fund balance in twenty-two, twenty-three, which left us with a hundred and six thousand dollars again, which is, is virtually nothing. This year, we used extra money to, um, kind of fill some holes. But that leaves us with a, a budget deficit, uh, three point five even after what I'm asking. And I'll be happy to respond to questions later on about how we got there. Basically, what I'm concerned with is how we're going to get out of there. And I think we're going to get out of there and do well. And, you know, let me say one other thing about, uh, about my being here and, and why I'm here. You know, I spent four years here from fourteen to eighteen. And I, I view this as a, a very special place. Uh, had a, a good relationship with the commissioners, had a good relationship with Ms. York's predecessors. We've met a couple of times and have had some, some good conversations. And I think we did some, some good work in, in those four years and we lucked in, in two thousand and eighteen. But if you recall, those who are paying attention, in two thousand and fourteen, we had some real challenges. We were in pretty rough shape. And I came before you guys and women, I guess it was, no, it was guys and women at that time, and, and had a pretty big ask and you, you stepped to the plate. And, and that ask was built around the vision that, that this community had adopted at the time. And I remember sharing with the, the board, uh, what it would take to implement that vision. And I said, you know, we can't ask you for that in one year, but we can set up a plan to implement this over six to eight years. And, uh, you got us off to a good start. Did well the second year, did well the third year, did well the fourth year, not quite as well, but still did well. And so my relationship with, with this board of commissioners has been, been very positive. And so here I am, uh, ten years after that, two thousand and fourteen, and I come to you again with a pretty big ask. Uh, and I come to you again when we're kind of in a, in a rough situation. As rough of a situation, where again, I, I don't want to recite of, of good things are happening out there in our, in our schools for our, our kids. So how are we going to get back on track where we can really move forward? We've found that, um, we have not been following the state allocation allotment for positions as closely as we maybe could have. Um, and, and that happens in, in all school systems over time. But it, but it needs to be ranked in and we've been able to, uh, kind of scale back, save a lot of money on, on, on positions that we're eliminating and, and cutting and, and help us get there. We've also, and, uh, our team has, has worked diligently the last two months, um, moved money around, if you will, uh, relied on extra money to fill holes that we, we would have had. And, and one of the things I'm going to present to you is a continuation budget. And Ms. York and I were talking, yes, but I had said continuation is, is, is kind of a misnomer in, in some sense because we're not continuing what we're, what we've been doing. We're, we're cutting seven and a half million dollars, but kind of to maintain, uh, any semblance of stability for our schools and our kids, um, this is what we're, we're asking you for. Uh, that allocation that I just mentioned to you, this is what the state, how the state allocates, uh, teachers based on the number of students. Unfortunately, students don't come in equal packages of eighteen or little packages of twenty-three. So we have variance from place to place. And the way we handle that is using other sources of funds, local funds, to hire an extra teacher, creating combination classes, which is not ideal. Um, and it's more difficult in our, in our smaller schools where you don't have an economy of scale. So what we've done as we've gone through this budget process is we've gotten much tighter with regards to using this. Uh, again, I'm not going to go through all these, but these are just the sources of funds that we get from the state. I, I do want to point out, um, again, we get money for teachers, we get money for instructional support, we get money for school building administration. Assistant principals come based on months of employment. Every nine hundred eighty-five students, we get one assistant principal, one month of employment. That gives us twenty-two and a half, ten-month positions. We have thirty-seven schools. So a lot of our local money goes into assistant principals. That job has become increasingly difficult. And our principals need assistant principals with testing, with everything that goes on, with all reporting, everything they have to do, even in our smallest schools, they, they, it's very, very difficult to do it themselves. At our middle schools with seven, eight hundred students, at our high school with, um, eleven hundred, twelve hundred students. School health personnel, that includes nurses, counselors and the like, instructional support. We can get counselors out of that money as well. Again, we rely on fifty few positions, um, in, in that area, we, we simply need more. Uh, transportation, we get five and a half million dollars there. I, I love this one, uh, instructional supplies, six hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. That, that, that's thirty-one dollars per child. That's what we get from the state for, uh, instructs, uh, thirty-one dollars per child. So I've got some really, I've got more issues with the state than I do with our county commissioners. But this is just to kind of provide some context of, of why we're asking you, uh, what we're asking you for. At-risk funds, um, this takes care of SROs, uh, anything, any type of support that would provide our, our students who fall into those categories that would be considered at-risk. We get SROs, uh, we get four hundred and twenty thousand dollars from, from the state for SROs. That would take that our high schools, no middle schools, no elementary schools. We're spending three million dollars of, of local dollars on, on SROs. And, I mean, in, in today's environment, in, in our rural schools, our SROs are probably more about keeping the bad people out than being concerned with what's going on inside our, our schools. Again, a couple of other areas, textbook, six hundred ninety thousand dollars. I, I don't know if you can get a chemistry book for less than a hundred dollars. So you divide that by twenty-two thousand kids. No, not taking chemistry, but textbooks are, are expensive. Couple of other state allotments, uh, children with disabilities, the public law ninety-four, one forty-two was passed in nineteen seventy-five. That's IDEA. There's a promise of federal funding and we're not even at fifteen percent of federal dollar. That falls on the state, uh, but on the state, pretty much is deaf ears. A lot of that comes back to, uh, to you guys. So how are we going to address this? And this is on, uh, on the document to give you a little more, um, explanation. We're kind of half a million dollars out of central services positions. We have an, an elementary director, a middle school director and a high school director. We're going to have one director next year, uh, two retirees. And one of the things that we've been fortunate about, we're large enough that we have a little bit of an economy of scale. And then all of these positions that we're eliminating were vacant positions. The, the only people being harmed financially in this would be people losing some months of employment as we, we kind of scale things. So we're cutting back, um, a lead nurse, gone from two leads to one. Cutting back some people and exceptional children, cut back an executive director of human resources. We've cut a, um, physician in technology. And we've cut a number of central services positions from twelve months employment to ten months employment. School instructional specialists, there are thirty-eight of these. And it's, I used to call them academic coaches when I was here before. They provide support to our teachers. We have a lot of beginning teachers that need there's some support, they provide support to principals. We have this multi-cured system of support that we're required to work, we're, we're required to implement, which requires, uh, a lot of work and a lot of time, a lot of paperwork. They've been, they've been the lead on that. We have, um, we, we try to have our, our teachers working in professional learning communities where they're planning together, somebody needs to help facilitate that. It's been these people, they're really important people. When we started this budget process, I told the team, instructional supports, specials are untouchable. We're not going to, we're not going to touch this, so we'll have, we touched them. They're all going back in the classroom, cut two and a half million dollars there. Principal and assistant principal alignment. Uh, again, we, we've scaled back to a, um, a, a more consistent alignment of, uh, numbers of assistant principals. We've actually cut some since this, um, document. I think it's closer to nine hundred thousand dollar savings on that. I think our high schools are going to be down to two assistant principals. Our middle schools will have two assistant principals. All of our elementary schools will have one, with the exception of four of our schools, which will be, be sharing, have, have to. All of our elementary schools will have one, with the exception of four of our schools, which will be sharing, I have to, I think, Pleasant Grove and Sylvan and BEJ and
Ray Street. And Ray Street.
And Ray Street. So that was a half a million dollars. And again, let me also say, I'm well into my fifteen minutes. These are really, really difficult cuts. And I think, two of my toughest days in twenty-three years as a superintendent, and I was actually chairman of the state board during two thousand and nine when the Great Recession kicked in, and dealt with budgets then. And so twenty-three years, four years responsible for a budget at the state level. I've never had a budget that was as difficult as this one. And so probably my three toughest days were Wednesday of that week, when I shared with the principals what we're doing. Thursday of that week, when I shared with all the people that are being affected. I brought all these instructional specialists in together over at Ray Street, over at C-Tech. Talked with them, brought other people affected in as I talked with them. And told them what we're doing. And it was just really difficult. And the other tough day was on Friday when I presented to the board. And board had a lot of really good questions for me. And I said, there's not a thing on here that I feel comfortable cutting. But we had to do something. Media specialists, librarians, we've cut back seven positions. We're going to have our high schools and our middle schools share a media specialist. It's more doable at some schools where we're sharing a campus than others. Those other seven will go back into the classroom. Non-teaching positions, we, our instructional specialists, in addition to cutting those positions, they were all eleven-month employees. So we saved a month of employment on that as well. Student services position, these are nurses, counselors. And social workers, I'm sorry. We've cut positions in each of those. And again, I see Mr. Thompson doesn't like that one because of her interest in all kids, but particularly kids who need special support, need special services. So we're scaling back on that. We have guidance assistants in our middle schools. We're cutting those completely out, they're halftime positions. Plus, we're going from two guidance counselors in our middle schools to one. We've reduced our elementary specialty programs, the Leader and Me, which we've seen that program really transform some schools. And A-plus, which is a cultural arts program, we canceled those both places. Program started between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and eighteen when I was superintendent, was implementing this program. I'm really proud of it and that was part of our strategic plan. And then the benefits that are associated with all these positions is about a million dollars. So we've cut seven and a half million dollars to get to where we are. A recommendation, salary increase that the state is legislating, we think is three percent. That's three quarters of a million dollars. Retirement increase and health insurance, again, these are things imposed upon us by the General Assembly that we have to pay on the supplement, on locally paid people, all people with the insurance. That's half a million dollars. Utility increase is four thousand, four, I wish it was four thousand dollars. It's four million dollars. Step increase, classified salary positions is about fifty thousand dollars. And increase in charter schools is about seven hundred thousand dollars. We have to, about ten percent of the eligible school-aged children in Alabama's go to charter schools. So from our, we have to pay a per child, whatever our per child allotment from you guys is, needs to go to that charter school. It's about ten percent. So when we build a budget, we said, take ten percent plus a little bit higher because this year we're in the hole with charter schools. We had a few more students in charter schools than we anticipated. Technology support and equipment, fourteen, one point four million dollars. Operational increases, one point four million dollars. And the Alabama's Virtual School, about a half a million dollars. On PowerPoint, I can, I'll wait for the notes. Have to be a question. It's about where do these dollars go and that's what this link is. So let me run through a couple and I'll get back to that and then to your questions. So where that leaves us is those items that were legislated by the General Assembly, almost one and a half million dollars. That step increase is five, and employee compensation, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The operation and technology services, which was the last slide I just showed you, is just shy of seven million dollars for a total of eight point seven million dollars to, for us to continue as, so it's a continuation budget minus that seven point five million dollars, if that makes any sense. And then when we looked at the total and the ten percent of that, that's one point five million dollars that goes to charter schools. So our total ask is ten point three million dollars. And when folks think the money follows the kids, the charter schools, this is a ten million dollar ask for us, but only eight and a half million comes to us and the rest of it goes down, we're kind of past you. So that's I must not have hit my button because I've got no idea. I put my timer on an hour and fifteen minutes. Tori's laughing because she's mad. That's, that's what I want to ask, what we are asking. I know it's a huge ask. I think, I think that is deserved. I can assure you that come July first, we're going to be on solid ground with regards to our budget. I think we've learned some lessons over the years that we can monitor some things a little more carefully. We I'll be happy to, I won't be happy to do, but I'll respond to any questions concerning. Yeah, why don't we just see what questions we have there? And Heidi, or Ms. York, do they have that electronically? Did you send that to them?
The links that you had sent me.
Yeah.
I did send it to them, but like we talked about yesterday, we're having trouble opening those on the county network. So I'm not certain everyone has been able to access them. So we have printed hard copies that we can distribute.
Okay, good. So you have printed hard copies of the breakdown of the numbers?
We did too, we told them that.
Okay.
I think it's the last couple of pages of what was passed out this morning.
Yes, I should look at my handout, shouldn't I?
That's what you're referring to. I think, is this a fresh version, Dr. Harrison, of the links that you had emailed?
That should be the same version as all the links we emailed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we do have that at our seats.
Great, thank you. So what you have in front of you then is a breakdown of the utilities and how we got to that four million dollar figure. You have a breakdown of what we're asking for with the technology support and equipment replacement and how we got to the one point four. And then the operational increase and preventive maintenance and how we got to the one point four.
Mr. Thompson, we'll start on your end with questions.
I don't think you have questions. I have real concerns about the lowering numbers of assistant principals. It scares me, thinking of Williams High School having a principal and assistant principal. Williams is like a castle. Is that, is it, that's what you're telling me?
They'll have two assistants.
So you'll have total of three administrators. That's still, I just know how important those APs are. They do so much. I mean, staff is important and then the student services is another whole ballgame. I know everything's about money, but I look at it as about kids and the ones who teach them. And I have a broken record. If we could just help what children walk out of into the school system, it would, it would be such a difference. But I just know the role that social workers play. I know the roles they play at DSS were short there. It shows up, it does show up in things called outcomes, evidence-based, you know, when you're doing grants and stuff like that. And I know the roles of these student services. I know how important McKinney-Bentoni is. I know how, I know how important all these things are for kids who just have a train wreck to live in sometimes. And that gets on them and some of that affects them and that affects your halls and your classrooms. You can't, you just can't pay it out of people, but you've got to have the resources. I'm big concerned about the shapes of the buildings. I'm all about that because when you walk into something, it really sets a first impression on how you are felt about when you go there into that building, teacher, student, whatever. And I have big issues about custodial things, always have been. But I just, I don't really have any questions, Dr. Harrison. I've been in this road with you before and it's always, it's always what we can, what are we going to have to do without? What do we have to do without? And when you do without, it shows up, it does show up. I just want the best for our children. I think they deserve it and I want the best environment for our teachers. Because they create the world, they do. And when we start realizing that, we'll do better by them. So I think you pretty much know what I'm saying.
Ms. Washington.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to walk through a couple of things that were in your presentation. I want to go back to your slide when you were showing me how many students you have per teachers. First of all, I'd like to know the total number of teachers that you currently have in your system. I don't need a roundabout number. I need something that's pretty close to what we're looking for. Like, how many teachers do you have? You mentioned a twenty-two thousand teacher number. Can we get a little more precise?
No, twenty-two thousand students.
Excuse me. I'm sorry. Nine hundred and eighty-five teachers, excuse me. Is that the number that I, that's the slide I want to look at? It says nine ninety-five, that's my mistake. The reason why I want to go to this slide is, are the numbers at the top, it's one teacher per nineteen students. Is that the ratio that we're looking at?
Kindergarten, the chart on your left, kindergarten, they allot one to eighteen, first grade, one to sixteen, second, third grade, one to seventeen.
Right. Can you tell me what the, what the ratio is in your whole system from K through twelve? What is the per teacher, per student allotment?
We, we are only allowed to go over about three students when we do that. And we have to turn in our numbers twice during the year in order for the superintendent to get paid. So generally, it's about three up. In some of our classrooms, we are allowed to submit a waiver, which allows us to go above what the state says we can have. But that is in situations like some of our honors, our AP courses, as well as our dual-language courses. So it just depends on what grade and what, what programs are in schools.
Well, I guess, I guess the reason why I'm asking this question is because if you could narrow it down, you could probably figure out exactly how many teachers you're going to need. And that's just how I'm looking at it. I inadvertently put twenty-two because I was doing like maybe a ten percent increase. Like I said, nineteen, nineteen students per teacher, I made it twenty-two. So apparently, I'm low, twenty-two.
Well, we could do twenty-two in some of the classrooms, but like in kindergarten, we could only have up to twenty-one unless it's a dual-language class. Then we could, we could go above that. What this is, we actually have more teachers than what is here. The state will only fund us nine hundred and ninety-five teachers based on the allotment they gave us. So if you go back to the previous slide with our numbers, the state funded us this year off of twenty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-five kids, which is five hundred and eighty-one less students than what they funded us for this year.
Well, the reason I ask that question is because if you are looking at those total number of teachers and you say that you have five hundred and eighty-one less students than last year, you could divide that number into five eighty-one and what I got is somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty-five classes that you're not going to need this year. Twenty-five classes that you're not going to need this year.
Well, we can't, unfortunately, it doesn't work as neatly as that because again, the state says that in the K eights, this is what you can do. And then high school is different because high school classes are based on registration with kids. So, you know, we, we don't, we don't make classes, let's say only five kids register for AP calculus. Then we find a different way to serve those five kids because we can't afford with a limited number of teachers to have a class of five. So we sometimes pair up classes or we may do the North Carolina Virtual School to serve those kids with that. So at the high school level, you may have a biology class of thirty-one, but your English one class may only have twenty-two. Depending on honors levels, classes are usually higher. But with our kids who struggle, sometimes those numbers are lower. We also have to take into account that this also includes our special needs kids who may be in an adapted curriculum class. So that's not necessarily, those teachers are counted in there because, and those classes are smaller. Like I think the most we put in a class is thirteen. But those are our most severe need kids and they're also included in the enrollment piece of it. We did question the enrollment piece just because we've seen our, what our enrollment's been doing and especially with some of the refugee and other kids that are moving into the county. Unfortunately, the state has said, after the first fifteen days, if our allotment is higher, then we may get more additional slots as well as money, but it will be closer to October before we'll get that. So at this point, anything we've done with allotments, like you said, we use the state's formula when we allotted out teachers this year. But what we've done is, we've tried to stick to that as much as possible because we don't know if we'll get additional funding. And if we do, then we could maybe make some class sizes lower.
And Ms. Jackson, we will see that reduction in teachers from what the state gives us. So instead of us getting those teachers based on the twenty-two, seven, sixty-six, they'll give us teachers based on twenty-two, one eighty-five. So that would be what about five hundred and eighty-one you were talking about comes into play.
Got you.
And we, I think, Ms. Johnson articulated one.
Absolutely. Well, the reason I ask is that you mentioned in your presentation that the state has given you a three percent increase in your teacher salaries.
Correct. Well, projected.
Projected, yep. I actually think it's going to be more, but I've been wrong before. The reason I ask is, and Ms. Evans may have to step in here to, I'm under, I'm under the impression that the teacher supplement is between eleven and a half and fourteen and a half percent. Is that correct?
I think that is correct.
Eleven and a half being on the low side. And as we work our way up to assistant principals, fourteen and a half. Now, the reason I point this out to you is because we pay assistant principals a little bit, well, I should say a lot more than we pay teachers. But the assistant principals and the principals get the majority of the teacher supplement. And the reason I say majority is because they're up at the fourteen and a half percent number. They're not down to eleven and a half percent, although I think they should be. And also, another thing, a teacher, I mean, a principal should not get a supplement if their school is in chambles. They shouldn't get any bonus. Nobody in the private sector would get a bonus for having that. And the reason I say that is, is if the state is going to give you three percent increase in salaries, that automatically, I just did my math, that automatically is an increase from the, from the Alabama's County taxpayer of point three, four, five percent. That's an automatic increase. So that's why I asked you how many teachers you had, because you could figure out how much that would be, how much the automatic increase would be to your one point four million dollar. Do you understand where I'm coming from?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I ask that question is, the same thing happened last year. Uh, the reason I ask that question is, the same thing happened last year. I don't, you know, I can't, I can't remember the exact percentage increase the teachers got. But I do know as far as Alamance County taxpayer is concerned, that that's an automatic increase. If you go up our, our supplement increases by, by at least ten percent. And I say ten percent of what you actually allocated. That's why I wanted to focus on this because I think your one point four number for teacher supplement is high based on the numbers I just gave you. I think it's gonna be high. I think it's, it's, it's high, it's gonna be high. Your one point four million dollar number is high. I'm just gonna say that. And we can sit down and talk about that at a later time, maybe when I'm in a little better shape. But that's just only things, two things I wanted to point out to you. That um, the, the students, the allocation that you're having to pay the charter schools um, how do I say this? The allocation you make to the charter schools is an allocation that you have no control over. It just depends on how many students roll over into that.
Correct.
And I'm, I'm looking right here, five eighty-one, I'm just taking that as a barometer. I know it could be less, could, no, it could be more. But I just wanted to point those out to you that the teacher supplement number that you have is high. I'm just gonna say that. Now, we're gonna roll down to the virtual school and I'll shut up afterwards.
Let me, let me back up on a few.
Yes, sir.
Before you get off that, where are you giving the one point four million?
On your presentation.
It's on the summary request.
On the summary request?
Where we added all of those things together.
Okay, so we're adding those things together. The salary increase, is that three percent, the seven fifty-five that I have there? That's factored in what you were just talking about.
Okay, thank you.
And I think the principal's supplement schedule is different than the teacher's supplement schedule.
Is it, is it lower than eleven? Would a, would a principal and assistant principal get less than eleven and a half percent supplement?
No, no, they, they, they do get a little bit more of a supplement. Um, but understand, especially at the middle and high level, they're working seven days a week till eleven o'clock at night. So it's not really a bonus, it's a supplement on top of what they're doing. Um, so I just wanna make sure that's clear. But yeah, adding those together and the governor has obviously recommended a higher um, increase for a raise for public school employees. But when we talked to Heidi earlier, we just said we were gonna leave it at three percent. If so, for some reason it goes up, um, we'll have to deal with that when it happens. But we wanted to keep it at what we felt like they had promised in the five annual budget that they had originally done. Cause we got four percent this year and it's supposed to be three this coming year. But we'll see what happens.
I thought it was gonna be seven, about seven.
Yeah, they said it was seven, divided over two years.
Yeah, seven over two years. And our four percent was this year. Next year's supposed to be three, we'll see if something happens different.
Well, I just wanted to point out that everyone should know that when that increase happens, our supplement to the teachers automatically go up. So I just wanna make that.
The percentage.
Right, and it's, that's, I, I know the staff has taken a look at it. Uh, but just wanted everyone to know that that is how it works. Now, the last thing I wanna talk about, and then I'll be quiet, is your virtual school. Uh, I heard from a school board member that the virtual school is gonna cost a half a million dollars. Uh, I, I think that number is um, not accurate. Uh, because there are several things that go into making that number what it is. Now, the reason I even say that is, is I talked to the Department of Public Education in Raleigh about this specific thing. Because it was my understanding that anybody who wanted to go to a virtual school, all it had to do was pick up the phone and call DPI and you're in. That's not necessarily accurate. Uh, they have a particular amount of people that they can take. Now, I know there's a, a new group in Asheville who's come online who will take the allotment that you are giving to the virtual school folks. And everyone can, now, they have made up, everyone can come. Now, the reason I even say that is, is I don't think that Alamance County taxpayers should have to pay for the virtual school if it's offered by DPI. But we know that they don't have enough folks to, to fit in that building. But we do realize there's other people coming online that will actually facilitate the people that actually want to go to the virtual school. And I think that the people who are currently in virtual school, and I do have a question for Ms. Johnson about how many people currently are enrolled in Alamance County Virtual School system? I, I think it's roughly two hundred and twelve.
Two ten, two ten.
Okay, so I'm close. Uh, you just take that two hundred and ten, divide it in five hundred thousand, that gives you how much it's costing each, each, for us to put them in. And I think that's gonna be very close to the number that DPI is giving me, around twenty-five hundred dollars. I just didn't want to be paying for something that the state provides. And I know five hundred thousand dollars isn't much in a budget of fifty-nine million, but it's something. Uh, about five hundred thousand dollars, in my personal opinion, will take care of your teacher supplement as an automatic increase. Now, maybe off a little bit, but I think you're gonna get close to that. Oh, that's the only three things I wanted to, to point out. And I know I'd definitely like to sit down with you and your staff at some point before June third. I know it's very soon.
We'll do it.
Uh, I've, I've been out of commission for a little bit and I'm trying to get my legs underneath me. But I'm focusing on these three, or, there's four things, but I didn't wanna bring the fourth thing up because I don't have enough information. But I do know that um, I'd definitely like to um, sit down and work with your budget because I know it shocked a lot of folks when they read the newspaper, twenty-seven percent increase in your budget. Shocked a lot of folks and my phone rang off the hook for days. And only, only saving grace there is I got shipped off to the hospital so I didn't have to answer all those phone calls. But I just wanted to let you know that, you know, I'm looking at these kinda things and how we can sort of like, help you with, with what you're looking at.
Appreciate that. Let, let me respond quickly to the, the virtual piece. That's a lot more money than five hundred thousand dollars being spent on the virtual school, okay? The principals pay for it by the state. Teachers are provided, they're paid for by the state. We use that same funding formula. Now, initially, I think when we first started working on this, we had about two point four million dollars in there for the virtual school. But as we looked closely, we saw that we had two art teachers. We saw that we had two music teachers. We saw that we had two PE teachers. And, and so we went back to that strict formula and we cut that faculty almost in half, plus we eliminated fourth and fifth grade. And so that's where the five hundred thousand would be for uh, technology, hotspots, uh, things of, of that nature. The virtual public school carries a cost to, to the school system. So it's advertised as free to kids and is free to kids. But, and, and the virtual public school, I actually started in Cumberland County when I was superintendent there. It became the state virtual public school when I was chairman of the state board. And, and so I, I know well how, how that operates. So you've got that limited numbers, plus there is a cost to the locals. The private providers operate kind of like a charter school. So if we were to take those two hundred children and work with a private school, off the top of our budget, that five, that, that figure would go down. That figure would go down two hundred students. So when it goes down two hundred students, thinking about ten thousand dollars per child roughly, that would be two million dollars comes from the state and goes right to that, that school. So we don't see it, but we lose um, the children and the money that comes with it. Now, of that ten thousand dollars, uh, a lot of that money goes towards, other than just teaching and learning. It can go towards supplies and materials, co-curricular activities, um, some of the building repairs. So a lot of things that a virtual school doesn't have to pay for comes out of that. Then, and one private provider that I talked with, they said they would give us five percent back for administrative costs. Of that.
That was strived, wasn't it?
It was strived, yes. And, and we had a good conversation and it, it might be something we might want to consider partnering with somewhere down the road. But I think that the, using them as a charter school would cause us more harm than anybody good. Anything good. And then the, the other piece of that, we would have to take those two hundred kids and pay that local piece. So that local charter school that we increased seven hundred thousand dollars this year, that would go up by whatever our local, whatever our local expenditure is times two hundred. So it would be, you know, I, I think really the cost would be, would be greater. And then the last thing, um, our virtual school is, is truly a school. It's, they, they've created a school culture over there. It's, it's really a school without walls. It's not a, a content provider. And um, I, 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 I think it's a pretty decent bang for the buck.
Might I ask a question, Bill?
Yeah, go ahead, I'll finish.
Um, I've been curious about this for a while, wow. If you, if you're offering a charter school that is, or, excuse me, a virtual school that is K through twelve, right? You, you would have, it's not?
Ours is not.
Okay.
Ours was four through twelve and now we're gonna become six through twelve.
Six, so you, okay, so there isn't anything feeding into four, four and five. That's why I got it. It didn't make sense to me, I was thinking K through twelve and you'd have all these people that would just be skipped when they missed four and five.
Okay.
That was one question. The other one was um, on your chart, uh, about the seven hundred thousand for charter schools? That, uh, that one? Then, I think it's the next chart or the next one? Then you had another million, five hundred thousand going to charter schools? So is that two million?
No, that seven hundred thousand is in there. That, that's the total that um, we'd be playing charter schools. This is our.
Okay, what's the seven hundred thou, oh, that's the growth, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I suggest that we take a five-minute break. Uh, give Mr. Carter a chance to come back. So if you just hold on for a minute.
I can move closer.
Back again, the first one we called out.
That was my.
Chairman, might I ask you my line of questioning, please?
That's when you get to drop the heat down.
Mr. Carter wants to, he can continue his interrogation.
Not quite. Um, as we all know, we've had some difficulties with financials over the last year to year or so. And I think this board feels like it probably needs to get a deeper dive into what's going on financially at ABSS. Part of our responsibility is to make sure that the bills for the county are paid. We can't have a school, we don't want necessarily to have ABSS cutting off HVAC to avoid HVAC or electric bills and have more mold. But at the same time, we need to get a solid indication of what those bills have looked like and what we, a, a real good estimate of what they're going to look like and how we reach a number like four million dollars. And that's a big chunk, that's worth four million dollars.
That is a big chunk and that's a good.
And, and that probably extends to some of the rest of the budget as well. I mean, we've got a real, the, the, the information we got from ABSS was a brother of mine gave compared to what we get from the community college, from sheriff's office, from the other departments. Um, we get details. Uh, our, our staff does and they prepare those details so that we can read through them. But Bill and I are used to financial details. I mean, I've spent thirty-five years doing finance, so I don't mind looking at details. And details help me absorb and understand why we need what we need. It's kinda hard for me to tell my constituents that, yeah, we're gonna increase the tax rate uh, two and a half cents just for utilities, roughly, for four million dollars. Um, I'm just rounding that off off the top of my head, but two and a half million dollars per penny and uh, four million dollars is worth it. One and a half cents.
That's good. I um, I apologize for not satisfying the need for details. You're almost in trouble when you assume. And I think your mind might be off. That's by design, I think. And I assumed, and I, I simply submitted the type of budget we did when I was, was here before. So I should've checked with Ms. York and said, what level of details do you, you want? So we're prepared to provide details. Now I'm gonna ask Mr. Hook to come up and, and address specifically the um, the utilities. And, and because I anticipated that coming and also these other increases you've got that's pretty. But we're gonna let him put it up and then let uh, Mr. Hook if he, as if he has a choice. Let him come up and share.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. In the, the packet of printed material that Ms. York provided, I have uh, some information on the utility bills. Mr. Carter, a reference to your question. Um, what makes it really difficult for, especially for electric, but also for, for gas? And uh, I wanna point out, we, we deal with Duke Power. We deal with Dominion Natural Gas. We deal with Dominion Natural Gas. We deal with AmeriGas because of the size we have propane. Right. We're the gas lines. Plus we have water bills and all sorts of just, or municipalities, sorry. So uh, but what made it really difficult, what made it really difficult to calculate? Thank you. Uh, is um, for sixteen years prior to the, the mold situation, um, the air condition and the heat was turned off five o'clock every day. And it came on again at about six o'clock the next morning. If you think about that, that right there is a hundred percent increase, more or less. Um, and then the other situation, during the summer, when the schools are working on four-day work weeks, it was totally turned off on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays. So we have no.
And that cost us twenty-seven million dollars.
Exactly, it sure did. So uh, when the situation occurred in early to mid-August, we had discussions in, in the joint meetings and we all agreed, turn it on and let it run to prevent this sort of thing from happening. Um, but we don't have any historic bills, invoices that would show us what it takes to run, run the air condition around the clock through, through the summer or, or anywhere across the year. And then the same could be said with, with gas bills and so on. Uh, in addition to that, and you all know, um, the system neglected to forecast an increase based on the new high school, which is a Dominion, Dominion gas bill and it's a Duke, a Duke energy bill. Uh, and it's in the Swebsenville area for, for water. So that wasn't, we have no historic records for that. Um, so that kinda illustrates how it's difficult. So one idea to try to come up with an estimate. Um, and my, my estimate is that uh, we'll, we'll see an increase just generally for all utilities, that would include water. I don't forecast any increases in water, although I know Ms. Rollins indicated that some municipalities had increased water rates. Um, but uh, just based on where we were and where we're gonna be, I, I think we're gonna be up eighty, eighty percent, eighty-two percent on our, on our costs for, for utilities. The big ones being electric and then, and then gas to some degree. Um, so what I had to do to, to try to do this estimate, if you think about last July, last July, we were turning the air condition off Friday, Saturday and Sunday, every day at five o'clock. So the July bills from last year are not a good indicator of where we'll be this July. Um, so once we got all the air conditions running around the clock, uh, I, I think the most valid month of invoices we've had would be for the month of September, which show on uh, these little figures that I have here is, is October because that's when those were received. So I think that month shows around three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Um, try to look on here for the numbers that I have. Three hundred ninety-two thousand at the bottom of that page with the, the figures. Uh, I think that's a, to me, a reasonable number to use for a hot month. I have no other month, figures to use for hot months. So the way I tried to do this, this math to put together a forecasted budget is I took the, the invoices that we had for electricity, for Duke Power for September and I applied those for what I would think are all the hot months. And you can. And you can see how I stacked them in to that calculation there at the bottom of that page. I just used 392,000 for what I saw as hot months. We had an accurate invoice for Duke Power for November and for December. I felt like we had a mild January, February, but we have had some cold Januaries and Februaries in the past. So I put down 400,000 for January, February, not knowing whether we'd have a hot or cold month. So that's how I went about doing, doing that math. And you can see the, the numbers and the way I've calculated. In the middle of this page that I'm referencing, you can see that, um, I've got a number that I'm using as an estimate, because that, that's all that I can do, and that number is 6 million dollars. So I have the, the prior year's budget. I've done the difference there. The difference between what I forecasted and what the prior year's budget was is 2.7 million dollars. And then I have suggested contingencies, because what I've learned is you never know what tomorrow holds. So I have a suggested contingency amount of 10% of the total 6 million, or 20%. That's because we don't know what the weather will be. The other pieces that we have too, we, through the ESSR projects, we've installed new chillers in places we didn't have chillers before, particularly with the Williams Gym, the AO Gym, the Western Middle Gym. That will be an added cost that we, we do not know what that will be. Then the other side of the coin, you've heard us talk about four-pipe systems in ongoing conversations, where we're able to run boilers and chillers simultaneously for the purpose of doing some dehumidification. We have those systems in place, and a lot more will be in place through the ESSR projects. I have no way to forecast what that, what that cost will be. We did that a little last year at CTEC after the mold situation, and immediately Finance Department started calling the operations and saying, hey, you must have a gas leak at CTEC. We have a bill for 900, uh, 900 dollars for natural gas. We never had a bill for natural gas at CTEC. And we called maintenance, this is what you check out. And it turns out the HVAC controls tech's, well, you told me to dehumidify, that's what I'm doing. So at certain times of the day, at peak times of humidity, that's what he was doing. So we don't have a way to forecast that. I certainly understand you, you need accurate figures to budget. We do too. We do too. We just don't, we don't have them. And I, I was thinking when Andrew Rollins was speaking, she referenced the price increases for, for energy. And she referenced water and sewer, but she also mentioned, uh, electric. I mean, across the board, I think that's the way it's going to be. I didn't take any inflation figures in here. I just tried to use what I thought were accurate numbers for hot months and cold months, and months where we had some somewhat accurate figures. So I did this calculation, you know, earlier, because we had to get numbers for the budget. But like, what I did is, I, I knew the November figure was exact. We didn't have our bills for March yet. I used the November number for March, because I figured, no, every March are pretty similar. That's about as good as I could do. Okay?
You've got a swag instead of a wag, right?
Sir?
Got a swag instead of a wag.
I suppose so. So I hope that answers questions around, around utility and utility forecasting. All I know is we have to be ready and have money to pay bills.
Mr. Rock, I'm looking at the, um, we're looking at the same document, Proposed Operations Budget, with the water and the natural gas and the electric, all on the same page. Is that what this is?
Yes, sir. Yes, that's the page I've been speaking to.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to hook at this a little bit.
Sure.
So the, it looks like pretty wild swings in water. Are you able to understand what particularly Burlington, it goes, you know, 50K?
No, I don't know. And what I did there is, water is the only place that I could tell you what it was the year before accurately. And so what I did is I had the 22, 23 water rates and the 23, 24 estimates, and I don't have complete 23, 24 information. So what I did for the estimate is I took the higher number of the two versus 22, 23, or 22, 3, 24. So in particular, the Burlington, when I think it says 111, my eyes are not really able to focus here, but 111, I think, is the high number for Burlington, and I moved that over to the, to the estimate. I can't say, you know, I wasn't in the department at that time if there was a model water leak or something else, but we have irrigation during hot summers. You have different things that go on in, in schools during, during the year. I can't speak to why it was nearby double for Burlington. That seems to be the one that was, that was off base.
Commissioner Turner?
Yeah.
The city of Burlington has a unique way of raising their water rates each and every year, about 10%. And Graham is jumping on that bandwagon too, which is a travesty, because we have the second most water in the state. Water is a commodity, and it should be treated as such. So if we have more of something, don't you think you should, the price should go down? But our government officials are actually using that as a way to raise money without having to raise property taxes. And Burlington is the prime advocate of that.
They ain't too shy about property taxes either.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
In, in summary, Mr. Turner, in the column labeled "high estimate", that, I just wanted to go to the high side, where, uh, where we were doing the calculations, so I didn't go under it.
So that's the highest of the last three years?
I only looked at 22, 23, and then the current 23, 24s.
I see.
But for, for several months, I don't have the, the 23, 24s, like the current ones.
A big increase in natural gas to Dominion, is that the new high school?
The new high school, and that was exactly what that was, Mr. Turner.
The, the obvious big increase is, is Duke Energy. It goes from 2.5 in this budget a year to an estimate of 4.6, this year, and then using that 4.6 number for next year. I'm wondering if, those are basic assumptions. This year, we ran dehumidifiers probably more than we will next year?
I think we'll see some benefits from the, some of the new systems put in through the ESSR projects.
We have fewer, we were renting a ton of...
Yeah, we were, through the, through the rental process, we were renting a lot, more than we probably needed. So we, uh, we have 300 and some, probably closer to 400, and we have probably about 350 of them deployed in schools and areas in schools that we knew were hotspots as far as humidity from, from last year. And we're going to keep monitoring that monthly through, through the year to determine, do, do we really need them? So for example, at Williams and Turnitin, the systems that are put in there through the ESSR projects, once they are fully running and running correctly, we should be able to dehumidify through the, the DOAS, the fresh air systems, in combination with the HVAC, the other HVAC systems there. I mean, we may not need to run any dehumidifiers, but the dehumidifiers running this year would be less expensive than running them through, through what the months we did last year.
Mr. Turner, let me interrupt there. Are we still renting, or do we own them?
No, we purchased out of ESSR funds. We had that conversation through our, our meetings here, and we found that we could purchase through ESSR funds, so we spent roughly a million dollars to, to, and we keep them at the maintenance department during the winter, and then we deploy them in, in April to be ready for when the, the humidity goes up.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I apologize.
That's, that's quite the way, Mr. Chairman. I, I do wonder if we might try to monetize, whether we're going to use dehumidif- fewer dehumidifiers in fewer, in less amounts of time, and therefore might benefit by some savings, and that number might come down this year. I wonder if we might just take a second to think about that. The, the other issue is, when you're, you say you're leaving on, you're leaving on HVACs now when you had them in the past. Are you assuming that you're going to leave them at the same temperature at night as you're leaving during the day?
Uh, we went in summer with no, no setbacks. From what I've learned, in, in the winter, we can do some setback temperatures, but we can't do extreme like, like you would think, because it, it takes a lot of energy to get back up from a lower temperature. So in the winter, we, right now, we're just running them all the same around the clock, but I think the place we could pick up some improvement is in the winter. In the summer, I'm hesitant to, to do any temperature setbacks, because if the dew point changes in the building, that's, that's the problem.
So if you leave Rob you on, I don't know, 70 in the day, you'll keep it on 70 at night throughout the summer?
Yes. Our, our temperature, we, we aim for 72 to 75, and that's what we try to pick.
And so the number of the six, can you go up first? The column F, the number of the 6 million, is that adding everything above it in the high estimate?
Yes.
And then when you subtract last year's, or this year's budget of 3.2, you get the 2.79?
That's, that's right.
That's your estimate?
That's increased, and I have the either one of the two contingencies. The 3.3 number at the bottom would be if we had a 10% contingency for the unexpected. The 3.9 would be if we had a 20% contingency for the unexpected.
Okay. I have some other questions that, I, I, I don't know if Dr. Harrison's been answered, Mr. Turner, but related to the contracts, the increase in contracts?
Yes.
And the, the description of, um, this, this guy listed 24, 25, Proposed State 015 Technology Estimate? Is that you?
Well, technology was moved into Operations Department just, just before I came, so yes, now it's part of Operations.
Okay. Can you bring that up here? It's this. So what's, what's the 1.38 number?
That's the number of dollars we need to have in our local budget to fund technology, and that is all the technology for, for the district. That would include all the schools in the county. So this number, 250,000, the state gives us roughly 250,000 dollars a year for technology. So our complete budget for technology that we're forecasting is this 1.6 number that's at the bottom. We brought that up to the top so you could see the math. If we take out what we think the state's going to give us, 250,000, that leaves 1.388 million dollars. Some of the numbers in here, and you can see some of the words we put for the different kinds of software that we have to have to, to run the district. The biggest numbers in here, the largest numbers, 415,000 dollars is for laptop replacement for students. Going into this year, our oldest student laptop, we use Chromebooks, and they're not, you know, they're, they're good for what we're doing, but they're not incredibly durable. This year, 25% of our Chromebooks will be in their fifth year of use. We think that we ought to have a replacement plan, so we're replacing 25% of our student Chromebooks per year. This 415,000 dollars puts us in a lease for 25% of the Chromebooks to be replaced. And then the next year, that 415 would double to, to 830. So you'd eventually reach a, a number of, I think that's 1.66 in the fourth year, and then that would be an ongoing lease. But that's in contrast to if we were to purchase them. If the full purchase price would be about 1.7 or 1.66. So you have a lease purchase versus a purchase. And we think a lease is better, because some of the repairs and warranties are fitted into the lease. So what we'd like to do is make a plan. We've never had a technology funding plan. And as we talk about the budget and having fixed numbers and being able to go forward, what's happened historically is money's been pulled from other parts of the budget to fund all these things on this list, and that's not a good one, but...
On the software for district student services, 240, that's a 245 dollar increase. Is that the lease, I'm sorry, that, yeah, that the leases on software gone up?
That's a yearly, a yearly cost, and it's been, we've been using different funds, like curriculum money, to pay for, to pay for that figure. So we've just been robbing Peter to PayPal essentially to, to keep this program running. And so what we need to do going forward is to say, here's the technology budget, just like we have a maintenance budget or a transportation budget, and this is, this is where our plan is to, to, to follow. Instead of pulling money out of other departmental buckets, it just cuts, it cuts them short. So what I'm trying to do is to get that righted to, to go forward.
Well, but this is in your expansion budget request, right?
Yes.
So if it's already being funded, and it wasn't funded here, it was still, it's still part of your continuation?
Well, yes and no. It, it's, to me, it's never been something that was budgeted. With forethought, it was something that, that's, we said, hey, we've got to pay this bill. Where can we take the money, instead of having it built into a, a budget like we need? Another big ticket item I wanted to, to point out, am I getting bumped off the stage?
No, I, I think when we look at that 3.5 million dollar fund balance, and look at ESSR money, we were kind of finding money from different sources to pay for this. And my sense is that's what hit into our fund balance. We moved money from Pot A to Pot B. Come, uh, come June, it's time to refill Pot A, and that's where we're at, the fund balance.
Exactly. In the absence of fund balance, we have to have a budget for this, this department and for these items. If we have no fund balance, then we have to budget for it.
That's the same for the 235 as well?
Yeah, each of these items are things that, that, that we have to have to run the system, to make sure the kids are protected online, that we're safe, and do all the sorts of things that our techs need to do to be able to take, take care of all the computer systems, internet infrastructure that we have. Another item I wanted to point out to, the 425, uh, 425,000 for projected replacement. Last year, I had to push that to the schools, but if you go into, to the schools, every classroom has, you hear people talk about smart boards and projectors that are mounted to project onto the smart board. Last year, we had, had schools absorb replacement of those out of their budget, which was a terrible hit for, for school budgets, because they hadn't planned to do that either. We just didn't have the money to replace them. But based on the age of our projectors in schools, a lot of these were put in back when Dr. Cox was the superintendent. We have some really old projectors in the room, which are vital in everyday construction, so we want to pull that back in and take care of it out of this, out of this budget, instead of putting that on individual schools, because it, because it is tough, especially for schools that, that don't, don't operate, to maintain, to do that, and it's an unexpected cost.
Isn't that really a capital expense?
Well, yes, it is, and I'm glad you said that. In some counties, capital for computers, student devices, teacher devices, and for smart boards would be pushed into the capital request, like our Pago request, but we haven't done that in the past that I know of, so we've got it here as, as on the continuation budget. In the end, it needs, it needs to find its way to some place, but if we pushed it over to Pago, then that, it would just push that, that number up. And that would be specifically the, about 800,000 dollars, the computers and the, the projector replacement.
Susan, any capital reserve, any items properly capital could come out of capital reserve?
The capital reserves that the county had would be for construction, not necessarily technology at this time.
What's the difference?
So you're looking at purchasing equipment versus the upkeep of a building, the facility?
We heard that years ago, about technology was not that buildings were.
Yeah, there is a category of funding we could create that would be operating capital. Other counties give money to operating capital for things like technology. So we could go through this line item and pick out the pieces that would qualify for that. Things like staff development would not. It would have to be a piece of equipment that is a one-time expenditure to qualify as, as a capital. But we could do that and come up with some options for the board to consider.
As your equipment and software, software leases and software replacement would qualify.
And then what's the 255 phone and telecommunications number? Is that similar to the 235 and 245?
Telecommunications network would be our, our phone systems, we have... Telecommunications network would be our phone systems, we have to do a contract for a voice-over internet protocol, and that's where that would be. So, that's not a piece of utilities, it's over here in the technology budget.
Why is that an increase of two fifty-five? Why do you?
Well, everything on here is, we've never had a budget within the school system for these items. All I'm asking is let's fund a technology budget so that we're not taking from curriculum budgets or from operations budget, where these things have just never been designated into budget, Mr. Turner.
The, I don't know where this list is. The list about the contract, the increase on the contracts?
Yes.
Can we get to that one?
Okay. And this chart that Mr. Walker has up on the screen really comes from a prior page. If you were to look at the first page that I have in the chart, it lists, yes, this one right here. So, this page is the maintenance budget. So, I've listed all the different categories that we have in the maintenance budget. There's one new item category that I know that y'all are going to want to discuss, but the current maintenance budget is ten million, nine hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. That's a set budget in reference to what we just talked about where we didn't have a set budget. This is a set budget that we have. So, I've shown what the current budget is and what I would like to see in twenty-four, twenty-five, which is twelve point three million dollars. And you can see the increases that I have for each line item there, with one of them being a new item of seven hundred thousand dollars that would be on the next page that Mr. Walker had up previously. It just kind of illustrates all the different service contracts. The reason I put the prior page in there with all the types of service contracts that we do is I think people just don't realize the maintenance department doesn't have the capacity to do everything, so we have to enter into service contracts to do lots and lots of things, and that illustrates that, and it kind of tells you where the figures come from. And so, I have that line item here for service contracts on the front page, but then when you go back to, and it shows just an increase of four hundred and fifty-three, where I've trimmed down some that I think we don't need in order to pick up seven hundred thousand dollar new one, which I'm suggesting we do HVAC and roof preventative maintenance. We've talked about in the past doing those sorts of things. We just don't have enough staff to be able to handle that for all of our HVAC and roof systems, so I'm suggesting that seven hundred thousand dollar figure. So, if you go to the last page, yes, that's one of the ones, Bruce, the proposed service contracts, that just illustrates all the things that we have to contract outside, like the hood systems and inspections and repairs. We have to have our hood systems inspected twice a year in all of our cafeterias and in our CTEC culinary program. So, that's expensive, and then you find items that are not working correctly, you have to do repairs there. And if you go to the Pago plan where I've indicated we need funding to continue to reinstall and re-engineer the hood systems, a few years ago, they just mailed the hood systems, and we didn't have fully functional kitchens, so you couldn't braised meat, ground meat, or use part of the equipment in the cafeterias. I've been trying to put that back since I got here, but once you put that back, then you have to have inspections, you have to have grease traps cleaned and different kind of things that are part of doing business. So, that kind of illustrates. On the right-hand side is where I put information about our lawn mowing contracts. You can slide some more so you can see all the information to the right, Mr. Walker, on the mowing contracts. You can see for mowing and herbicide spraying, we're spending almost half a million dollars to get that work done throughout the year at all of our sites. That number feeds back in over to the left into the total when you look at all the types of service contracts that we enter into. And I've also put in at the very bottom a contingency for service contracts, again because you never know what tomorrow holds. For instance, here in this year, just recently, we've had to add some handicap sidewalk, handicap sidewalk at EM Holt because we had students that couldn't get to where they needed to go. We had to have the contractor for concrete go over to Sylvan where we had to add a parking lot in the back for pre-K, which is you're supposed to have and we didn't have, but then when we put the parking lot in, we had to put a sidewalk in to get the parents and students because they walked them into the classroom, there was no sidewalk. So, things come up all the time. More about concrete, we did some repairs at turn time, we have some repairs on the table for Eastern's concrete bleachers, we have things all the time. That's an example just around, I think I put Mason Rea Concrete in the list for twenty thousand, that's what that would be, it could be higher. We may not use it all, I would think we'd probably use more than that just based on what I'm seeing.
The four fifty-three, three sixty-five and the other table, does this table add up to that four fifty-three? I'm just trying to, are these tables linked?
Yes, the number, so if you look at the total requested for maintenance service contracts, the two point two million dollars proposed, if you go back, Mr. Walker, to that, and you go to the bottom, that number is in here, total regular service contracts that excludes our custodial, that's what that is because I have custodial listed as a separate line item there. So, you can see that, and then I've put that seven hundred thousand that I'm suggesting for preventative maintenance for HVAC and roofs, I put it as a separate line item because it's new, and that pushes it up to two point nine for service contracts. So, that's where that.
Is the four fifty-three number, is that, are those new contracts or are they increases to existing contracts or both? The increase, I'm hoping it's just an increase, four fifty-three, three sixty-five?
Yes, all I'm asking for on continuation, if you go back to the first tab, Bruce, down at the bottom right, the total increase is one point three seven eight, and if you reference that to Dr. Harrison's slides where he said one point four, that's the difference in service contract with, of the one point three seven eight, seven hundred thousand, it is the addition of the service contract, so.
And I'm just trying to dig into a piece of it, just to understand. So, if you got the four fifty-three, three sixty-five is the increase in the maintenance service contracts, is that increase related to the other slide which lists the contracts? Or is that additional money for existing contracts or are there new contracts?
Or additional services. Bruce, can you go back to the, so I can find the four fifty-three number at the bottom? I'm hoping I have my mask correct. So, the total service contract is two point nine for, and that includes two point two and the seven. So, Bruce, if you go back to the first, you may be correct, and I think that, Mr. Turner, what you may be alluding to is.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand the end of it, what the increase is.
Okay, I see it now. Bruce, one more time, let's go back to the list. So, if you go to the total service contract where it says two point nine?
Right.
But I have it separately, it's two point two for total service contracts and seven. So, if you go back over to the first tab, you can see that I have the two point two and the seven there separately to illustrate we have one new and one continuing. If you look to the left, the current budget has one point eight million in it for service contracts, which I have exceeded. When I first came, the budget was set at one point eight million dollars for service contracts, and my department's trying to open over two and a half million dollars in service contracts. So, you can't open that much if you're not budgeted for that much. But the one point eight that was in the budget, this has probably been in there for years, is just not enough for the service contracts that we need to have. But I guess in, you know, in reference to your question, the two point two is what I think we need next year to propose, but that's exclusive of the seven hundred for the preventative maintenance. So, I'm asking to, just to increase that budget line item by four hundred and fifty-three, but the total increase for maintenance budget is the total one point three, what Dr. Harrison has a one point four.
Susan asks, if you get an additional four hundred and seventy, four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for maintenance service contracts, what is that by? What is the additional four fifty-three by? That last year we couldn't buy?
Well, if you go back to the sheet where I have the budgets, you know, all of those, you know, this one right here, if you could see what we get, like gym floors, I think I had in there last year a forty-five thousand dollars, you know, what we needed, I thought we needed to refinish the gym floors in the summer, it's sixty. So, you have increases. I'm just thinking, as we're talking, you know, in twenty-one, I think the year-over-year inflation was four point seven in twenty-one, it was eight percent in twenty-two, and it was four point one percent in twenty-three. So, if you take any hundred dollar basket of goods that you would have bought in twenty, then across those years, it would have been a hundred and seventeen dollars, not a hundred dollars. So, the percent increase in any hundred dollar basket of goods, including these things, is seventeen percent, just a percent increase. That's not, you know, just adding the inflation up, that would be doing the math across the years. And I think that's what we're seeing here, but not just here, but across every budget. If you take what the budget is for twenty-three, twenty-four, the ten point nine, which is what it was the year before and the year before, but if you looked at it and said, hey, what if every hundred dollars was increased by seventeen dollars, which it should be, then this number wouldn't be twelve point three three oh for the budget we need, it would be more like twelve point eight million dollars. I'm not asking for that, but I mean, I'm just kind of illustrating the point that we failed to recognize inflation across years when we come to ask money. I say, Lee, this is the first time I've stood here like this, but I think that's important. And then I just go back to what Andrea mentioned when she talked about their bills and utility bills and the way they're forecasting and Duke Energy's forecasting, and it's in the news every day, what we're having to pay, and it gets passed right back to us for everything we have to buy. So, what more do we get? We don't, I'm not saying we get any more, we get what we need, which is probably about what we got last year.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Harrison, I have some other questions about the topic slide.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I just want to make sure I understand all of my items. Now, the continuation, salary increase, so I just want to make sure I understand, three percent is what the General Assembly has already passed to increase teachers' salaries by?
Correct.
If I were a vet man, I bet that's not going to change for this year.
That's what we're betting as well.
Yeah. So, the seven fifty-five is essentially a corresponding three percent increase to what the county pays in supplements to teachers' APs and pressures.
Correct. Plus the locally paid teachers.
So, it maintains whatever percent, I guess Mr. Lashley said eleven to seventeen percent?
Eleven to fifteen or fifteen.
Okay. It maintains that same?
Right. So, whenever base salary goes up by three percent, as Mr. Ashley pointed out, their eleven percent becomes more.
Now, we're missing a number of teachers in the district.
Correct.
Is the seven fifty-five based upon the number that are allotted or the number that we have? Based on the number that's allotted?
With the ones also that are, we know are going to be local, are added to that, so there are like the fifty-three. The enhancement teachers, those are also included, as well as some of our other instructional staff that are on the other slides.
The retirement rate increase, that's a legislative pass-through that the county just has to pay.
Correct.
Health insurance, again, the legislature passes a health insurance package for teachers, this is the county's part that we have to.
The county's portion.
Correct. Utility increase, we've covered that. What is the step increase?
Step increase, our classified personnel are on a salary schedule, and the increase going into next year would be a two thousand dollars cut.
Charter school increase, so this is another example of a pass-through requirement for counties to pay that the state puts upon us.
Correct.
But I think you said that the number is based upon a ten percent student, of our students, but also that we're estimating that our number of students is going to go down.
Correct.
So, why would the, why would we have an increase in the number of charter school students for ABSS at all?
We did not project as many charter school students as we had last year, so some of this is catching up from last year. We're actually in the red on our charter school line item, and like, our guess is if each charter school is open, that some of that five eighty, or that, what was it? Yeah, five eighty-one, some of that five eighty-one is going to show up for charter schools. So, it's the ten percent of what our local, what our total local budget is.
So, previous to this year, we spent about four million dollars in charter schools. This year, we're already up knowing that we're going to spend four point eight million, so we under-budgeted about seven hundred thousand dollars. So, we're in the red of that piece of it. So, we know that we need to add that back in because we don't see it going down more than likely it will go up. So, that seven hundred thousand is outside of the ten percent that we have to give them just for the pass-through. It is the number that we have to pay because we didn't budget correctly going into this school year.
Does that number also include or does it not include the optional ten percent that the county can spend on maintenance?
It does not include anything on capital.
Are there any savings at all that ABSS receives by not having to educate the children that are in charter schools? And I'm talking about year-over-year budgets, is there any savings at all?
We're serving fewer students because the students are going there, going to charter schools, but we're also, you know, losing their state dollars. And so, the, I would say yes, there's probably a little bit of savings.
It's hard to quantify.
It's hard to quantify, to be fair, I mean.
I mean, you saw the same, I already talked, so.
Right. Some of the things, you know, at a school, if the children, if the five hundred children came out of one school, then we'd call it a five hundred student school. But when they come out of ten from here, twenty from there, and that was one of the things we found with the virtual school last year, the way we were allotting, but we had so many ninth graders, but they're coming out of six high schools. And that's what we felt we were going to tighten up that allotment.
Our money goes through thirty-five charter schools, so it's not just the charter schools here. We have two thousand four hundred and eighty current students to go to charter schools, but there are thirty-five charter schools that we send money to. We send money as far away as Uwari Academy. It's a good school, but it's.
Where?
Uwari. It's way, I mean, it's past Ashboro, but we have kids that attend there and that we have to pay for because their residence is in Almonds County.
Yeah, I sure don't like this one anymore. That's all the questions I have right now, Mr. Turner. Thank you, Dr. Turner.
Mr. Horr, do you have more?
I just had one other one, I'll follow up on, popped up back when we were talking about student class perspiration, and a comment was made about dual-language class would allow for higher student concentration. That kind of sounded counterintuitive to me.
In the early grades, what happens is we see attrition over the years, so if we have a kindergarten dual-language class, if a class starts at eighteen, just by natural attrition, that class is going to probably be down to ten or eleven by the time they get to grade. So, the state is allowing.
Twenty-three, forty-four will come back down below the one to nineteen or one to eighteen ratio. I got you.
What we have not talked about is school performance, which are the, hello, where are we talking about, if you will?
I'll have to yield to Ms. Johnson, but I.
And if you would go to the microphone, we could hear you.
So, I shared a document with you. We currently have seventeen of our thirty-eight schools are identified as low-performing schools, and so this year. And so this year, we were more strategic at what did we put in our, in our school improvement plans? What are we doing at the district level to support that movement as well? Some of the things that we've done differently, we have now formed a district improvement team that meets twice a month. It's regular, we've been doing it for two years, which is what we should've been doing all along. We actually put our minutes online so that the public can see that along with the school improvement plan. You can go on any of those sites and see that. In that district improvement team meeting, we also talked about, are we intentionally using dollars from the federal, that the federal government sends us to be able to help schools and help move achievement? So we did that this year. We looked at the needs of our kids, and we started in elementary school because we know if they don't get that solid foundation there, by the time they get to middle and high, we start seeing them either sometimes with discipline issues, they fall so behind that they become disinterested in school and they eventually drop out, which then becomes a county issue, and that's what we didn't want to happen. We're using our, we, this year, we used our federal dollars, first of all, for an elementary literacy tutoring program. We hired retired teachers, we hired folks who we knew could use a literacy program that would, had been vetted, a research-based program. Our principals identified students who were on the bubble that just needed that extra push to be able to move forward. We've been a little excited, everything's preliminary, we're in the middle of EOGs right now, but we're seeing some movement with those kids. In our K-two, we saw some in-class growth, that's another assessment that we give to see how the kids have done since we started our tutoring program, so we're actually starting to see growth because these tutors work thirty minutes, forty-five minutes with these kids a couple times a week, and so they're getting that individualized attention. Another thing that we've also added was day-to-days. You know, you hear a lot of times, schools talking about, we look at our data, we look at our data. Unfortunately, though, with everything, the other mandates that we have to do at school, our teachers don't always have time to dig into the data and really do something with it to individualize instruction. Gone are the days where we can walk into a classroom and everybody is an even playing field. You have kids that are way above grade level, and you have kids that are sitting in a high school classroom on a second-grade reading level. So what we did for all K-12 schools this year is we gave them two day-to-days each semester, and we at the Central Services pulled the data for them because we didn't want them to waste a, a time doing that, and we used our federal funds to, to provide subs and coverage, and the teachers dug into their data and they were able to form groups of who needed what type of help, what skills are they missing, and how can we better serve our students. At the high school level, not only did they do that for the tested subjects, but they looked at kids who are in the ninth and tenth grade currently, who may be showing signs, either through attendance or discipline, of possibly not graduating within four years. So our graduation coaches took that data and we formed small groups in with that. We did surveys at the end of each of these because with the federal dollars, you have to do a survey of what people thought. Unanimously across the district, teachers said this was the most valuable thing that we've done because we actually got time, because we provided that to really dig in to see how can we help our kids even more. With our strategic, or with our school improvement plans, the seventeen low-performing schools had to identify the areas that they were going to work on within their own school, and each one of them had to provide checkups to the state within the school improvement system to be able to show where they were, what they needed support with, and so we were able to do those things.
Define, good portion of us know what low performing means, but not everybody who's listening, define low performing.
Okay, in a, in a low-performing school, it's where the majority of the kids are scoring below a level three on assessment, so their, their majority of their kids are scoring at a level one or a level two, so.
How many levels are there?
There are four, yeah, five, five, when we go up into it, I'm sorry, I forgot about the. Three to five is proficient, and then one and two is not, and four and five means you're career and college ready.
Is there a letter grade sign to lose, low performing schools?
It's, it's an F, but it also could be a D, because we have, there are several things that play in part to that low performing, so if the growth isn't met, so maybe they're at a D, but they showed no growth and their growth went backwards, they could actually be in that D column as well. Our hope, I'm gonna knock on wood, and is that we are gonna see some folks coming off. Our goal all year academically has been not to add anymore. I don't know if you saw my presentation earlier this year, if we add one more school, we'll become a low-performing district, which means the state will come in with a lot more stricter things that we must do. I'm excited about some of the things we've been seeing before EOGs. I think we've got some great principals who've really taken it to heart of what our real job is, which is, it's the kids. And I feel really good about the federal dollars that we spent this year. To me, they've been intentional. You know, they're not necessarily buying people, and, and those types of things or programs. We've actually spent it doing the things that kids need and investing in our students.
Oh, those students, ten, how many days and how many hours?
Let me pull that document up, I apologize.
Dave, if you can just provide that, that sort of information, as, as Mr. Carter and Mr. Lashley, I also have an undergraduate degree in business and accounting, so I know the numbers, look at the numbers carefully. And I agree, Dr. Harrison, the more numbers we have, the better we will understand what the needs are and the concerns. I particularly would like to know, and this is more to Dr. Harrison, I guess, but you have so many vacancies, for example, even in not just teachers, but maintenance and HVAC repair people and roofing people and whatever, I'd love to know how many vacancies were there for twenty-three, twenty-four, and do you anticipate the same number? I know it's hard, you guys, to hire an HVAC person, for example. Same thing for the county, they're in demand and their salaries are considerable.
Yeah, I think that school systems across the country are having a hard time finding new teachers. Last I saw, the state needs about twelve or thirteen thousand teachers a year. Our institutions of higher education provide about five or six thousand. Pennsylvania used to be the biggest exporter of teachers in the nation, they have changes, they have shortage now. When I became superintendent in Cumberland County in nineteen ninety-seven, we typically have five hundred vacancies a year. We have thirty-five hundred teachers, and in ninety-seven, probably seventy percent of our new hires came from North Carolina. When I left there in two thousand nine, probably thirty percent of our new hires came from North Carolina. So, and, and I would argue that our, our General Assembly is not making teaching attractive in, in, in North Carolina. I don't think our teachers are valued by the, by the General Assembly. We have some things in place, we're beginning to teach a support program. I think Ms. Johnson and her team have put some teacher support things in place, but that's a, that's a industry, if you will, wide problem, and I think we need to, as a, as a nation, need to, to value our teachers a little more. Now, I'll say one thing on the, on the letter grades, there's almost a one-to-one correlation between poverty and grades. And I was chairman of the State Board and the General Assembly passed that legislation, and I can remember standing before Jillian Erbersite and telling them that if we do this, we don't need, we can save all this money on testing because I can tell you who the As, Bs, Cs, and Bs and Fs are, and it's, it's pretty much true. And I think if you look at our schools, you look at it across the state, there are very few outliers. But poverty, letter grades, a correlation.
You had Southern High, Grand High, you just, I hope, completed contracts for both those roofings. And Mr. Hook, that's probably a question for you, have those contracts been signed, executed, with or construction began, and where are we on completion of those two roofs?
Truman Paisley, could I ask Revon to something, Ms. Johnson, before she sits down?
Oh, sure, I'll, I'll.
I know, I just didn't want her to sit down because I know Greg's gonna come up and I've got a bunch of questions for him too. Is that okay if I do that?
Sure.
Okay, I'll take a second. Can you just give me, if you've got it in front of you, the list of the seventeen schools?
Yes. So the low-performing schools, we have Graham High School and Cummings, but they both have D letter grades. The virtual school with a D letter grade. Turntime, Graham Middle and Broadview, they have F grades. Sylvan, South Graham, Andrews, Pleasant Grove, they have Ds. North Graham is an F, Hillcrest is a D, Hall River, Newland, Growth Park are Fs. BEJ is a D, East Lawn is an F, and those are it.
Okay, McKinney Vento, are they still housing some families for, you know, crisis housing, temporary housing, whatever, at Motel Six and Econolodge?
Yes, I must pick some up.
Okay. A lot of these schools that I just heard are real high poverty, because poverty has a different look now. It's, it's all kind of different things that goes into that bucket. I think this is a, a real valid point to show how important student services are, how important social workers are, and graduation coaches are, and all kind of stuff, because a lot of these children don't walk to school with a pretty lunchbox. They're depending on schools to feed them breakfast and lunch, and sometimes take home meals if they've got that. And just the crime, the criminal level in some of the homes that we've got, you come up across the street at the jail and see, there are plenty of people over there that don't pay their child support because they just don't, they're always in and out of the system constantly. And just the drug crisis in our county, and the juvenile crime crisis in our county, and then the dropout rates. It's, it's, you know, it kinda all goes into one, a real ugly bucket, and that lays on the kids, and we see that walk into our schools. And seventeen, I'm glad there's just seventeen with what we have because, you know, just like the world, we got really rich and we got really poor, and in the middle, we got struggles. And we just, we just can't forget what makes up and the why in these seventeen schools because the other that adds up to the thirty-eight are working and struggling too. They just haven't got that, that check, that box yet. So I just want us to realize how important our student services are to these kids and to these families, to get them where they need to be, which is not always a great place to start with, so, thank you.
Initially, when you report it back to us, it's in lieu of, yeah, ten thousand oh four AWE, you can figure out what it is, but spell it out for us, guys, make it easier, please, and your name, please. Use less code, you're saying less.
Oh, AWE is Alexander Wilson, and their school code, in case you, because all of this is available on the state website, but their school code, we want to make sure you had that, is ten three oh four.
Right, and I, I knew.
Yeah.
My wife taught for forty-two years and she ran you the code, so.
Taught my son, I'm well aware.
But, but having said that, not everybody can read those codes or has even wanted to look them up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm, I'm double-checking my numbers here, but I keep coming up with thirty-five, is the.
Race, well, C-Tech is not on here, they're a school, because they, their scores go back to the home schools. And then, South, these scores here from last year, Southeast just opened this year, so they will not be on there. They will be on this upcoming year, but there should be, there's thirty-eight schools now, but Ray Street is on here. Ray Street, we vote on a different model for Ray Street because of there being an alternative school. The state gives us options, and right now, the state has listed them as in progressing.
Right, that would make thirty, thirty-six, so the other two, if that were.
Mr. Hook, you're back, up to the panel again, hopefully.
Yes, sir, you were asking about the, the status of projects. So, when I first came, I learned there was a top-ten list, I think we've kind of picked away from using that language. We had a top-ten and a next-ten. So of the, the items that were on the top-ten list, all of them are under contract or in progress, works in progress, or completed, with the exception of Southern High School. Southern High School, we ran into some design, design issues there, so we're still working, working through that. Southern, Southern High School, since you mentioned it specifically, the initial design plan had a metal roof on the auditorium area, but then we found that the way the design was made, it was gonna dump all the water in the back parking lot that would go down to the football field, which my department several years ago had fixed that problem, so we had to, we're gonna redesign on that part of the roof as well as some of the pod buildings, and we talked about pods A, B, C, and D. The pod buildings that are connected into the Southern High School, the new addition, the metal roof design, they have to have to work around some corrections there to make sure that they're able to make the metal roof system on the pods fit with, with the new addition. So we should be pretty, pretty close on completing that design soon. They're gonna start work on Graham High School, Graham High is under contract. They're gonna start work there on, on the tenth of this month. Graham Middle is over fifty percent complete on that roof project. Hall River Roof should be done any, any day now, so we've made good progress. The, the middle school cameras that were on the list that you all had funded with capital reserves, we were able to use those monies at Western Middle and Woodlaw, those projects are complete, we're just waiting on the final billing. And out of those two, out of the five hundred thousand, we'll be able to give, I think it's twenty-eight thousand, more or less, back, back to capital reserves. We kept them separate so we didn't mix money on, on those projects. So, and then, along those same lines, in reference to the next-ten list, we're three deep on that list, too. We have a contract to take to the board for BEJ roof replacement at the next board meeting, so that one will be ready to go for summer. And then we have Western Middle, design is complete, we're awaiting funding, which is tied to the, the June eighteenth bond money release, so Western Middle will be ready, ready to bid, and then Western High is, is in design. And then also, we discovered collaboratively that Eastern High should've been on the, the next-ten list, and it was nowhere on any list, and we pulled it up, and that one is designed, in design as well. So I think we're making great, great progress on, on all those projects in reference to some of the, the larger high schools. The work there will be more or less a year-long proposition, there are so many roof sections that'll be done in, in phases throughout the year, so, but I think we're doing well.
What's your completion forecast for Graham and Facina?
Can you repeat the question?
Completion forecast?
Um, I, I think we'll, if we begin at Graham, Graham High on Monday, that we're probably looking at nine, nine months, but, I mean, based on the way things have gone, I've said before, I don't wanna give you all any kind of misleading promised dates. So, I mean, that's just, just the, the way I would see it, and I would think at Southern High, once the, the design is done, then, then nine months from the time that we, we begin work later. We had three driveway projects that were in that top-ten. Alexander Wilson looks complete, but one of our, our third-party testers, again, back to the service contracts, we contracted with a third-party materials testing group, they discovered that the density or the compaction of the driveway was not correct, so they have worked with the, the designer to specify to the contractor, you have to mill, mill down the top layer of the complete driveway and redo the top layer.
Who thought was that?
Sir?
He called us to have you hear.
Well, the, the contractor, you know, they put, they, they ended up late, and that's just one of the things that, that happens with asphalt projects. If you end up putting asphalt down in cold weather, you're not gonna get the correct compaction. So, when you bid those asphalt projects late and you begin them late, then that's one of the things you could run into. But the contractor's gonna stand behind it, and that's not costing us any money. He's gonna take care of it.
That was my next question.
Yeah. So, that, yeah, that was my concern, too. So, that's all gonna be fixed. But that, that really ties back to the service contracts, where we employ third-party testers, and they do the same thing when we do a track like at Cummings or the track project that we, we go on at Western. They'll be down there, they do soil sampling, and then they do compaction testing on the end product, and make sure that all is above board before we, before we pay, and we'll get it all, all corrected. But back to the driveway projects in the top-ten, the original top-ten, we have the AW project, which we're using that driveway, and it's, you know, usable, and it looks good, but we're gonna get that top layer corrected. The EM Hope driveway project, they're on site now. There's a backhoe down there, and they've got all the, the new driveway plan flagged off, and they're ready to break the ground as soon as the kids are out of school, Friday, the seventh. So, that one's ready to go. And we have a contract on the AO driveway project, and they'll begin that probably, you know, middle, middle or late June. So, those all, all those driveways should be completed during the summertime. So, we're making great progress there, and in a couple of other areas, because I came through here on these projects. The Cummings track, we have a couple of punch list items to button up at, at the Cummings track, but we're using that track, and it's great. And then, we've already broken ground and started tearing up the, the Western High track. But I came here and asked for lottery money months ago. But, but, you know, I ask for money for these projects that involve asphalt, but you, you cannot begin them until, until warm weather. So, that's, that's where we are now with regards to those.
Well, I am extremely pleased with the school board and administration in your hire. Things are moving so much quicker now that you've come on board, and I appreciate it. I think we all appreciate that. All of you guys are important, but this guy's a major key.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your act.
I still would not have your job for any amount of money.
Don't say that to him.
And Mr. Lashley has a question for you.
I just wanted to verify something, because me and Craig Turner, back when we, I guess when you, you mentioned AO or AWA, is there, this is back when your previous person in your position told us that we would get reimbursed for some of these driveway projects. Or, the asphalt sort of threw me off, but I'm still hoping that there's some way, somehow, somebody knows that, that we are to, to be reimbursed from the state for these driveway projects from some of the things we've done in the past.
And that was my next question.
So, I actually referenced in what they call the Spot Mobility Program. NC DOT funds that program, and they have a selection process. So, applications were submitted once thirty percent designs were completed on each of those driveway projects. Applications were submitted for that program, and only the EM Hope driveway project was, was selected, which is, is a good project to, to apply that money to. So, the way that works, Mr. Lashley, is it's reimbursed after completion, and so, we've already had a little conference with, with the DOT to ensure we know how that, that works. But essentially, after EM Hope is all done, and we've done all the pay-ups on that project, then they would reimburse a maximum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars against allowable costs. And we think all the costs there are allowable. I think the budget there is one, one point two, one point two. We're just a little under budget there, but I would expect to get the full seven hundred and fifty thousand back to, to give back to capital reserves.
After completion.
After completion, okay.
And then, that money goes back into your capital fund, is that correct?
Yes, sir. If that's, if that's where you put it. We just sent the check back over here, Susan.
I might have snuck and answered the question beforehand. So, that money will be available for later spending for capital for the ABSs.
Yes.
But that's important.
Got a question for you about comparing these numbers to our peers. County gets a book like this from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. I'm wondering if the School Board Association provides some sort of peer comparison for the status of schools, performing, low performing, status. We've got one, one A, and that looks like, if I'm reading the abbreviation correctly, that would be the early college?
Yeah, I think it's, the State Department has that accessible on their webpage. I know they don't produce a document with comparisons.
I just, I think it would be interesting information for us to take a look at where we stand as compared to peer counties, similar size, similar size school population, and see how many, see if the, the numbers are stacking up, just.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we need to, to get back to, and I, and we're gonna try to start the process a little bit this summer, but really setting some academic benchmarks. And I think the first couple of years of the benchmarks, we compare ourselves with ourselves, and, and look for continuous improvement. But by year three, we need to look at school districts with whom we want to benchmark. And I think we need to look at those school systems that we think are higher flyers to, to aspire to. Yes, I think there's some, some value to that. But I think, you know, we're at the point right now that we really need to identify our goals, our, our short-range goals and our, our long-range goals. I don't know where we are with our strategic plan, and that we have something in place. But I think that was a real strength we had when I got here in two thousand and fourteen, that this community had developed our vision statement, and the staff had developed a, a strategic plan to go with it. And I think that was kind of the thing that we were able to build our budget around, that this is what we want to do, this is what we aspire. And I think with, with COVID and mold and all the stuff that's gone on the, the last couple of years, I think many school systems across the state, and I think the state itself has gotten into kind of putting out fires and just trying to get through. And, but I, I think we're at a point, and again, that's, that's why I think it's so important that we go into July with a new superintendent coming in, that we're on sound footing, that we can really look to the future and talk about. And I think that's something that we need to be attentive together. I know Impact Alliance has a group together. They're called, I don't know what they're called, but are, are kind of working around, bringing community leaders together. And so, I think it's something really to be said.
I will, I will say that the district improvement team that we've put in place these last two years, Dr. Davis and I chair that. It's the first time since I've been back, and I've, I've been here five years now back, that we are actually being intentional. And we look at that data, we look at our subgroups, where those are, and we're actually starting to make intentional plans. Like I said, I don't see us knocking it out of the park and everybody coming off the low performing list this year, because there's a lot of things that go into getting on it. But I do think we're gonna see some improvement because of the work that the, the district, we have to model what we expect in the schools. And this is the first time, I think, that we've done that and been intentional with our spending to tone it in and to look at that data.
Can you provide that projection chart, whatever it's gonna be, to us, the county commissioners?
By the end of next week, we'll have our preliminary scores, so I can put something together. But they'll be preliminary until the state actually finalizes them. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Another, I think another critical piece, too, in rebuilding competence, is gonna be bringing in a really top-notch CFO. Financial information is critical. As I told Dr. Harrison earlier, I've had a school board member comment to me that he didn't feel like the financial information he had available to him was sufficient for him to do his job. So, that's gonna be a critical piece. And needless to say, we want to have competence in what you provide to us. And I think we all know that's not the case this past year.
I was one of the, I've gotten over a lot of people that filled out your survey, and like it or not, I did that. But I emphasize in my survey response, one superintendent likely with not only an educational background, but some business or accounting background, because that's a large part of what you do as a superintendent. And additionally, suggested, I'm glad I'm on my board, not yours. You don't have, you don't have to listen to me. But suggested that you do something similar to what ACC did, and narrow your choices down, and later, before your final decision, allow the public to come in and at least hear from the possible potential new superintendents.
I can, the board had serious consideration discussion about that. I know a couple of people who have applied, and they would not have applied if there were gonna be a public set. Elected boards, with all due respect to my elected board, boards are different than community college boards and higher education boards. I, I think this board is gonna do everything they can to get input from, from the community. I think, I know this board is taking very seriously that feedback that they got, but it would have, and I think this is what the consultant told the board the night he presented, that it would seriously impact the, the number and probably quality of applicants. I've been around a long time, and we've got some really, really good applicants.
And that's positive.
Now, at ACC, we didn't publish the names of all the candidates, or all they got, because we, but brought it up to a point, I was on the Presidential Select Committee as well, and we brought it up to a point where, I think, I can't remember if it was the top five, I believe it was, that we, if you got into that category, if you wanted to be in that category, you were notified. And when you were notified in that category, you were gonna be public. But beyond that, the...
And the board would have had have done that at the outset. And again, one individual who I talked to, he's in a good situation, good board, good community, and he wouldn't take the chance of being in the final round, so, if it were, if it were public.
I think we understand that and appreciate it. And that's why you don't have to listen to me on that. But having said that, I particularly do, and I really ask fairly urgently for response on number of vacancies in this twenty-three, twenty-four budget, not only on staff, principals, assistant principals, teachers, but more so, or equally as important, maintenance, all kinds of things of that sort. Because it gives us some insight as to what really, not just your needs, but what are you gonna be able to fill.
I think we had a number last year.
Ms. Anderson can pull that number for you, for you, please, like from different points.
Late last year, I think, or sometime earlier this year, we had a number that you were down from seventy-one to twenty-five in maintenance. That's still somewhat accurate?
The number seventy-one was from years ago, when we ran a full warehouse of supplies. That, that number wouldn't match what we, what we do today. We have a handful of, a handful of vacancies, most of which are because of transient nature of some jobs.
Not apples and apples, huh?
So, maybe you modify the seventy-one, what you really think you need, and then what you feel. I'm not asking you to be creative.
No, no, we're simply the percentage of vacant positions we have in each category.
Yes. Board, anything else from this board?
I just need to ask Mr. Hook something. He's looking at me. I, I just, I, I have a question. When I was on the school board, there were so many school shootings, and the walls were a big deal. We thought everything possible for the safety of the campuses, A, B, C, the difference, you know, that's a nightmare when it comes to security. When I was at Graham, you've got the wall, you've got the big metal doors, but they're wide open because there's no security. Same thing with the other schools. I'm just curious, what kind of time are we looking before that's a completed job? Because that wall's doing no good with those doors wide open.
So, specifically, the, the Graham campus, which, which you named?
And the back of the school with all the small swimming pools and just the parking lots, nothing but potholes and the gates broke. Just, it's got a lot of stuff that needs to be taken care of.
Yes.
Just wear and tear.
So, the, the security walls that were in the design, initial design from the Graham High Bond project included the security walls. I think what they, they decided after Graham, Graham was sort of the first project up, it was more practical instead of, instead of walling off the entire campus, with just a wall between the pod buildings to connect. So, if you go to Western, Southern, and Eastern, that, that's what, the way that was handled. But at Graham specifically, it has an exterior wall that was part of the design, and it has several doors that really should be equipped with key card systems and key fob systems. We have in the, in the PGO plan, the Capital Improvement Plan, for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, to replace the, the cameras and add key card systems to Western High, to Graham, Graham High. So, we've said here, I think, when I first came, we were saying the camera systems were ten-year-old, ten-year-old systems. Now, they're eleven, but there were no key cards. So, that's what I'd like to do out of the Capital Improvement Plan. That, that wouldn't address Southern. Southern did not have security walls in the initial design of the Bond project, so that wouldn't apply there. Eastern has security gates there, so that, that, I think I have Eastern and Graham in the, in the first year of the Capital Improvement Plan, and in Western, again, the next year. I had to go back and look at the order that I had them. Eastern is missing one section of, of security wall that was not in the design. I could pick that up, you know, in, just in the contingency amount that's in the, the Capital Improvement Plan, to get, to get that completed. And then, we, we could just add a key card system. It wouldn't address replacing the, the eleven-year-old cameras at these, you know, at the campuses. But we could address what you're calling, you know, the safety, the safety measure. They are tied to the, to security walls.
Okay. I know when Dr. Cox was my first school board, so superintendent, and I remember when smart boards were just like, they come right out of heaven. They were just the biggest thing ever. There were PTOs that even, you know, would raise money to buy one for a score or something like that. Are the smart boards being used in the classrooms? Because you're talking about the two forty-five thousand, the projectors and all that. Are they still a vital part of that classroom? Are they being used just like they've always been used? Because that's a lot of money across the district.
Well, they are. And so, the, the figure that's in the continuation suggestion that I had was projectors. So, when you look at a smart board system, you have the projector that's mounted above the board. The board just receives the projection, but it can be an interactive folder. But that dollar figure is for the projection. Things have changed over time, and it might be, you know, more relevant to a curriculum discussion. But when those were put in, we didn't have Chromebooks. So, we did a lot of interactive activities where students would come up, and you could have multiple students engaging with a smart board. The smart boards are used every day, but they're probably most heavily used, you know, for projection and class discussion and things like that. Lesser amounts, you know, in secondary school for interactive activity, where you're actually touching them. And if you go to the new high school, we didn't put smart boards in. We put screens like you see here, because that's more practical in a high school. But the funding that's in the, in the suggested continuation budget is for the projection part of the smart boards, because that's the part that expires over time that we have, that they have a life cycle and we have to replace.
Okay. And I noticed your custodial fee went up slightly. What, what kind of higher expectations are we gonna have of them? Because that's always been a controversy every year, because you get pros and cons depending on what school you're in. I'll talk to you about some things. And I'm just curious, is, are the expectations for the custo, that's a lot of money to clean the schools, to have the schools, the floors waxed, I mean, the whole nine yards. So, when the class and teachers go in that school, it just sparkles, and it stays that way for five or five million dollars. I'm just curious, is it, do we have high expectations of these folks?
Yes, we do. MFM deals with the same hiring situation in the school system and the maintenance department, and... and every, every industry out there deals with. And, you know, it's, it's a very competitive market for, for the, the type of employee that, that we're staffing, because, I mean, literally, they can, they can have five job offers in one day and pick the one they want to show up to. There's a lot of transient nature in that, but we do have some, some folks that are, have been tied to us for quite a while. We had the same complaints, concerns when we dealt with a company called Premier, and then we dealt with Bud Group, and then now with MFM. When I first came, the Board of Education, you know, asked me some, some questions. And so I went back and did some repricing with some, some of the, the folks that were involved in the RFP, when Dr. Thorpe had done the, the RFP to choose MFM, to see what pricing would be like. We were two and a half or three million dollars away from the next one. One of the next ones, one, one that we already had in the past. So, you know, when you're having to shop for something inexpensive, you, you get something inexpensive. We have high expectations, but, but it's difficult because of the way that they struggle with, with staffing. So we, we, we have things they're supposed to do daily and weekly and monthly, and, you know, we try to follow that and ensure that they do it. But they have been responsive. I mean, and that's, that's, I think that, that for me has been important. When a school expresses concern to me, and I go back to their, their district management for MFM, they, they do respond. So they, they work well with us. But at, at the price point we're, we are with our contract, you'd probably have to double that to, if you wanted to rehire ABSs staff, which was the way it was when I first came. But one of the facets that's gone now that we can rely on in the past, we were able to pull in folks who were maybe in their twilight years of, of working, because they could come and work for this, for the state, and then they could obtain that lifetime health insurance benefit. That was taken away a number of years ago. So the draw that we have against Buc-E's or McDonald's or Target for the same labor market, we don't have a draw. We don't have something that would, would pull you back to, to be a custodian. And I think that's, you know, the same situation we deal with when we have shortages with, with bus drivers and other positions, is the competitive market for, for the type of labor that we need, it's, it's, it's pretty rough.
We see that across food services too, rent laughter, all kinds of stuff. I got, I'll email you my other questions.
One more, one more quick. There's a, there was a book written, God, if I recall, the book, a management book, management by walking around. And I know sometimes you can be overwhelmed by the amount of work you have to do, but one of the most critical things about observing your operation is walking through your operation on a regular basis. Is that something that's expected of principals today?
Yes, sir. In fact, we use time management to try to, like, if we have discipline, not only are you going into the classroom to see what's going on there, but instead of having kids walk to the office where they may get lost and take a little long, we actually, especially if it's something minor, we can bring them out in the hall, have the discussion, deal with it there, so that we are killing multiple stones, or multiple birds with one stone. So yes, sir, we do work with them on that.
I want to thank school board members, chair, my chair, administrators, and everybody that's presented, both with ABSs and ACC. Really appreciate it. We will not have work session until the 10th of June. So we've got a week off, and we have a meeting Monday night, which gives you guys time to pull some of the information we're requesting together. And I would really encourage you to get it to this board and to Ms. York early in the week, if at all possible. I understand testing scores and so forth will be somewhat delayed, but as early as you can, which will help us make our decisions. But I want to thank you. Ms. York, would you approach? One last, one last, you'll probably have some worries, you know, if you have any questions. You would add this to the presentation.
If there are any questions from the board, we're happy to take those, but otherwise it can be late.
Chief, I'm here. It is now 1:08. We've been in session much, much longer, and I'm not blaming anybody, but than we intended. So item number seven, Ms. Crawford, we're going to bump you to June 10. And if the board has other questions, I'm going to open this session up to questions that we have currently. This ought to be answered.
I have one, Mr. Chairman, that actually relates to the school system as well. I think the last time we met, there was some discussion about Cummings High School bleachers and which way to go to make that fix. And I'm wondering if the school system had a recommendation or an ask? And if there's a deadline on...
We appreciate, our, our recommendation is the $325,000 project, so we can get the work underway and get it going. If we were to go with the replacement bleachers, we couldn't get started until November. There, in such a state, I had Mr. Hook the other day, put tape around those bleachers, replacing those bleachers. I don't want anybody sitting in those bleachers. The company tells us that the $325,000 lasts 20 years, and it's not a guarantee, but that's kind of where our recommendation is.
Is there a deadline to have that in process so that they can be ready by football season?
Mr. Turner, the, the company that, that we work with, they, they've stated they need to order the steel, the steel to be fabricated for the repair, and they, they would like to move on that to ensure that, you know, once they get started, they can get it completed in time for, for school start. So what they have suggested to me is if I gave them a letter of intent backing up that I was going to cover the cost, that they would go ahead and, and order the, order the materials. The reason I've held on that is because I have it built into the capital improvement plan, the PGO plan at 325, and that's still on the table to be approved. So I've told them as of now, I can't give them a, a, a letter of intent or anything that says yes. And I can't do a contract now because the, the funding's not there. So that's kind of, that's kind of where, where I am now.
The PGO that you were mentioning wouldn't be available till the next fiscal year. Do you mind if, if you got those funds July 1st, we should be able to complete the process by football season?
Yes, it, but it's still tied to, if, if he waits to order the materials July 1st, the answer's no. If I was to go back and, and to communicate with him something formal that, yes, we're going to, we're going to do this project and I have funding for it, then he's going to go ahead and order it on good faith.
We talked about the funding that was available for, from Bond projects, that there's enough there to cover that. I don't even know, is it, is it proper? I don't know if this board declined to vote, but is it appropriate, this meeting, to vote on?
Yes.
The issuance of bond monies for these bleachers?
Yes, I think it could be. I think it, it meets with the spirit of the purpose that was noticed for the meeting, number one, but then also the statute allows for new issues to be voted upon as long as all five members of the board are present. So either one of those would, would make that appropriate for today.
Mr. Turner, I have a slide that illustrates, if you're interested, my calculations on the amount of bond money that, that we have left, if you wanted to see it.
Absolutely.
Yes.
While you're pulling that up, where feet go when they're sitting on the bleachers, is that going to be filled in like it was supposed to when you're talking about didn't pass up, wasn't up to code or something?
Not up to code. You, you can look on Google it for national bleacher standards and find that a four-inch sphere is what they define should not go through open places, like, you know, the, the kickboards, because that would be like a child's, a child's head. So under the seats, you know, you have your feet on the, on the, the ground, the floor, and you're sitting on the seat underneath, it's, it's open like that. And so that, the project includes closing that, but then around all of the railing going up the stairs and all around the bleachers, it's, it's wide open. So they would put in a chain link system, and that's what you see in, in modern high school stadiums. If you were to go to, Southern High School is probably a good example, their home side, you know, it's, it's basically a chain link to all. Anything of 42 inches above grade, you need to have it where a no four-inch sphere can go through any, any, any place. So there's the top side issues of code compliance, which is what I just referenced, and then the bottom side issue where the, all of them, all of the legs on the home side would be, we'd add on steel, probably two feet up and to go down, we clean off the concrete footers that are there that you can no longer see. I, I think with TLC, we can get a great number of years out of there, out there, you know, like Dr. Harrison said, they said, well, these will last at least 20 years, there's no guarantee to that. But I think if we fix some, some drainage issues, you have water that stands under there, the steel legs have been just sitting in water all these years. But it, you know, if you have a lot of rain like we've had lately, there's a lot of water under there. But we can, we can work on other, other issues and, and I think we'd all be very pleased at how it, how it turns out. But this project amount fixes the code compliance on home and away. It replaces or it doesn't add on to, to the bottom part of the legs, all of the legs on the home side, the, the water situation is, is not the same on the wayside, but it would repair any leg that needs to be repaired or added on to on the, on the way or the district side.
I hadn't heard about the wayside before, so that's new.
Well, the code compliance is the entire thing.
Right.
But there's just a handful of feet on the wayside, but they would take care of it all while they're there. So this, this...
Before you go to your slide, Ms. Evans, Ms. York, do you have a recommendation as to funding this?
You could authorize or reallocate bond funds, which we believe has an available balance of 1.9, to get this project moving forward.
Absolutely. I don't know whether we...
I think it's going to be a consensus of this board to go ahead and do that.
Absolutely.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that one.
Right. So in addition to 325,000, 32,000, that would cover?
Right. I think Mr. Hook had previously indicated we needed about 32,000 to close out the Cummings High School project. So that leaves a balance of about 1.87 that you could use to allocate the 325,000 for the bleacher repair.
So, your idea, I'll let you make the motion in a second.
You already made it, I'm good.
You're good, okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, on the paper, signature, I, I say I.
I'm going to say, like I said last time, I'm for replacing them. I just don't want them back in here and here, and this didn't work, or we need something else done to them. I just think they deserve to be replaced.
We're saying I.
As I know. I'm 4-1, because I know you weren't for it last time, your last meeting.
I wasn't here to vote.
No, no, no. I talked about advancing them.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't willing to pay to have them replaced, because how much to have them replaced?
1.1 or something like that.
1.1. Now, this 325,000, you just said would last for 20 years.
I, I think, I mean, my opinion is it would last quite beyond that.
Okay.
If we, if we take care of it.
That's a, that's a great fix.
My opinion.
I won't be here in 20 years, so, you know, you have the opportunity to get back yourself out.
Don't say that, Bill, you're younger than I am.
But I'm, I'm for, I'm for getting them fixed, and 325,000 for 20 years, sounds good to me.
I hope that turns out good.
We have a 4-1 vote. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, we also need one additional motion and vote to occur, and that would be the authorization to transfer 357,000 from, I'm going to recommend the Southeast High Project to the Cummings High Project. You've voted to utilize the funds, but we would need that budget amendment to actually transfer the funds.
Somewhere in a second.
Further discussion, on favor of signature, I say I. You approve?
I don't know what to do, because I'm not approving the others, so should I not approve this? I just, I just want them replaced, but that doesn't matter. I'll say yes, you have a 5-0, because it's got southeast in there, it doesn't matter.
This is entirely different.
Right, I'm good.
Okay. Do we have anything else for this meeting?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move in a second.
A motion to adjourn in a second, on paper, signature, I say I.
Thank you for watching the Alamance County Commissioners Meeting. Commissioner meetings typically occur on the first and third Monday of each month in the Commissioners' chambers at the County Office Building at 124 West Elm Street in Graham. The first Monday meeting begins at 9:30 a.m. and the third Monday meeting begins at 6:30 p.m. Changes to the meeting schedule will be posted on the county website at www.alamance-nc.com. The video of this meeting will be broadcast on Local Gov TV. Please go to www.localsgovtvnc.com for more information about their schedule and to see more videos produced by your local governments. You can also access this meeting through our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/AlemanzCountyNC or by clicking the YouTube link on the county website. Technical questions regarding this meeting's broadcast or production may be sent to our county webmaster at webmaster@alamance-nc.com. This address is for technical questions only. Comments and questions about the content of this meeting may be made to the commissioners themselves. You can find their contact information at the Alamance County website at www.alamance-nc.com. There you can click on the link that says county commissioners to learn more about the commissioners, read minutes and agendas of commissioner meetings, and find other information about the county commissioners. You can also send mail correspondence to county commissioners, 124 West Elm Street, Graham, North Carolina, 27253. Again, thank you for tuning in to the Alamance County Commissioners Meeting. Thanks for tuning in. If you're watching on YouTube, be sure to hit the subscribe button to stay up to date on all our latest video content. If you're watching on Local Gov TV, be sure to visit their website to see all of the content made for you by your local governments.